Do you have your script? Because I got this script for the liquor license of Anna's. Do you have a copy of that?
It looks like she had notified me. Those are the drugs.
Okay. Do you want to check?
Maybe. I hate this one.
I didn't even look at it, but honestly.
And it's got my name on it, so I think that's what.
Okay, then it's yours. And then, um, okay. And apparently there is an objection. Did she email that to anyone?
Nope.
On the liquor license? Am I to read that aloud into the record? Yes. I'm assuming Judge Floyd is coming to swear in an officer.
That is my.
I found these on a printer. So are they for her?
They're for her and.
Should I leave them right here? Because that's where they come up to do. Okay, I've got some over there if you don't. Do you want me to read that into the record when it comes time for that?
Yeah. Hello, Mayor.
Okay. I think everybody's here, at least on the other side of things, who is gonna be here. So it is six o'clock. And I call this city council meeting to order. Roll call please. Um, he just texted me and said he would be absent this evening. Councilmember Thomas. Councilmember Beth.
Here.
Councilmember Miller there.
There.
Member Edward.
Here.
Mayor Tim Bugg.
Here.
Mayor Green.
Here.
Okay, now we have the optional pledge of allegiance or moment of silence. Who's joining me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united in the law, with liberty and justice.
Thank you very much. Uh, let's move on to approval of the agenda. Other than groaning at the apparent length of it, no one has any objections within our community?
Eight seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. All were in favor. Let's move on to public comments about items not on the agenda. If anyone would like to come up to the podium and speak, uh, you will tell us your name and where you live, and you'll have three minutes. Go ahead, start.
Good evening. Stuart Van Combe, 316 West Eighth Street. Here tonight representing the Historic Preservation Commission and the Main Street Program. I have two very brief announcements I'd like to make. The kind of folks the council of the flyer I'd like to hand out.
Please.
First and foremost, May 28th, the Historic Preservation Commission in conjunction with Lake County Public Library is hosting a workshop on how to research the history of your home. We'll run through a presentation on an example. Cisco, I might just, I could just send those along. It'd be great. Um, we're gonna run you an example of historic home and then ask people to bring laptops tablets in the library so they can sit down and try to do the history of their foundation side of our collaboration with the library. This is part of our Preservation Commission. But the other thing I just want to let council all about is the Main Street Program and the Historic Preservation Commission are working on a historic walking tour right now of Leadville in early stages. We received our initial funding from the Community Fund very gratefully. It will be a much updated version than things you've seen in the past. Data to map-based, geo-located. So if you're walking down the street, you'll be in front of this building. You can see exactly where you are on your phone. You can hit a button up and come to the history of the building, some historic photos. So we'll just put a link on that. We'll be probably receiving some additional funding as we get going, but I'm very excited. These sort of tours bring a different type of tourist to town. One that spends their money differently, that stays longer, and so I think it brings a huge opportunity to our town court. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions on active answers?
It's very exciting. Are there any other public comments or items not on the agenda? If no one else in the room, then online. Chrissy Gallozo, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Green and council. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Um, I just wanted to say it's been a pleasure working with you all over these past five years. Tomorrow is my last day as the Housing Facilitator at Build a Generation. But fear not, I will still be around for a few months, um, helping onboard the new person. And so sorry, Tam, I still can't make an announcement, but you should know, um, by next Monday who that person is going to be. Um, I just wanted to, um, say that I'm really glad to see you guys are considering the housing diversity, um, code amendment again, um, tonight. And I'm sorry, I'm in Denver and I'm trying to drive back to Leadville, so I'm just talking in public comment. Um, I, I hope you guys move forward with that. I know that you wanted to do some incentive, incentive zoning, um, also, but I would just encourage you to come back to that at a later date and move forward with this. That proposal was made about three years ago and gosh, it would be a really great sending away gift if you guys moved forward on that. Um, and I just wanted to mention that it does have some implications with homelessness as well, because we have, I think about three, um, property owners who are interested in putting ADUs in their backyard specifically to serve our homeless community members. So, um, just encourage you to move forward with that and, um, that's all I've got. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chrissy. We'll miss you.
I'll miss you too.
Any other public comments online or in chambers? Okay, seeing none. Let's move on to a police officer swearing in Judge Floyd.
I also think it's very.
Yes, that's it. We stand in. Just give it family time. You ready?
Yes.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Erin White.
I, Erin White.
Do solemnly swear that I support.
I do solemnly swear I support.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
Constitution and laws of the United States.
Constitution and laws of the state of Colorado.
Constitution. Underfit Colorado.
And the municipal laws and code of the city of Leadville.
And the municipality codes of Leadville.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
I will uphold and obey and.
The law without consideration.
The law without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
I affirm that I will faithfully perform.
I solemnly swear I faithfully perform.
The duties of a Leadville Police Department Officer.
A Leadville Police Officer.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
I enter this obligation freely.
I enter this obligation freely.
Without any reservation.
Without any reservation.
Need you to sign both of these, please, right on each of those lines. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Oh, it's so great. To add another tour number. Thank you so much. Welcome.
I'm set off for you guys to have.
Thank you all for coming. Well, it's all downhill from that. I just love that stuff. Okay. Let's move on to the consent agenda, which is really pretty robust this week. Is there anything on the consent agenda that people feel uncertain about or need to discuss further? Because if not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Well, just the only thing is, um, were, um, was Tamara Jemling's email reply sufficient to Chief Brown? Brown, sorry, um, such that he's ready to sign the T O P?
Yes.
Great.
It's my little favor. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All were in favor. Okay, doubters, look at that big chunk of our. Hey, thanks, everybody. Appreciate you all. Oh, thanks, Sarah. Okay, let's move on to presentations and discussions. We're gonna start with, uh, our presentations. Are threefold. I will ask, um, each presenter to try to be mindful of time and let's shoot for 10 minutes. Um, if it takes a little longer, we'll discuss. So Mr. McParcher, you're up first for a presentation of the Lake County Community Fund.
Thank you for being here. Thank you all very much for this opportunity, Lori. Thank you very much. Um, can you see my presentation here? Lori, go ahead. Next slide. So just, you know, the Lake County Community Fund, we are chair. Chairman. Um, and our mission is to also invest into Lake County. This is our board and our, our founding board, we started in 2017. We have done tremendous amount of work laying the ground, bringing in infrastructure, like sports. Foundation will be able to accept constitutions and raise funds for Lake County. And our board has put in tremendous hours and time to retire. Next slide, please. Our mission, uh, Lake County Community Fund provides means to expand capacity of local organizations, promote some so they giving opportunities and inspiring within Lake County. And that's really primarily from the side of Lake County. As you all know, we're surrounded by three of the wealthiest counties in the United States, tremendous wealth. So that's our mission, main mission there. Next slide. Um, we were starting, uh, the discussions first started in 2014. We became charter as an independent by the Concede 3000 in 2017. And again, the objective was to provide a community fund for donors who wish to contribute to charity that supports. Initiatives. And next slide, please. So the, um, the, uh, so we with climax, we know there's a time limit when the money at some point shut down. And this is one of the inspirations of the community um, to inspire new investment. So when the mind does close, that we will have a source of charitable funding into Lake County to support our local organization, local houses, providing capacity and structure that's needed to, to attract new funding to begin with. Next slide, please. Uh, and fuel gas and critical service delivery. The, uh, and more of the big, more operation. Shared support service to low amount of profits. Help them build capacity. And as you know, we've got some tremendous organization services for you. It's our social safety net that's been our kind of safety net is about. Next slide, please. So Charles Spott, he was one of the founders of General Motors. Um, he spent most of his life in Flint, Michigan, and made tremendous personal wealth in his legacy when he retired was to create this community foundation in Flint, Michigan, which became Charles. And this is his definition right here is a community foundation is an institution of the community, community and the goal of the community. Um, in which a wide range of residents work together to create long-term strength, solutions for developing a vibrant, sustainable communities. Um, next slide, please. So we now currently, we are the fiscal sponsor of 23 local organizations. And what Community Fund does nearly envelop, we provide a Bible conceited charitable status, which means these organizations can receive charitable contributions. They can receive specific grants, they can write grants. We, the community fund helps with fundraising. We provide backend accounting services, financial management, we have a donation platform. We've helped with Power to Give Day, building landing pages for Power to Give Day for, for our local organizations and, um, provide tax receipts, ensuring IRS help applying as good as contributions. And the big thing is nonprofit capacity, going support, supporting that. Next slide, please. Um, this is an example of, of an online donation platform. Looks like it's on our website. This is one of the 23 that we built out. And then this is an example, Lake County, Lake County Education Fund is a childcare. Prior to last year, uh, there was zero licensed daycare in Lake County, between zero. There was, uh, no government support for childcare in this county until last year. Thanks to the city of Leadville, they contributed to this fund 50,000. I think the county contributed 80,000. And to date, this fund has distributed 164,000 dollars to local childcare. The spending checks to 27 childcare teachers to help their benefits and also tuition assistance. So that's one example. Fiscal funds we sponsor. Next slide, please. So this is just a list of the, the organizations that we're fiscal sponsored for. The City of Leadville, the Rotary, um, next slide, please. Uh, Lake County School District. So we are, we allow these government entities to raise charitable levels. They cannot raise charitable levels by us. They need to have that by the C three of them. Next slide, please. So one of the things that we've been involved with in 2020, Conde Gieff Foundation designated the Lake County Community Fund to be the, uh, the regional champion of Conde Gieff Day, which is one of the largest giving days in the United States. Last year, uh, Conde Gieff Day raised 55 to 60 million dollars on December the fifth day, um, for charities in Colorado. And we raised, um, for Lake County charities, 163,000. Um, we had 951 donors that contributed on Conde Gieff Day. Next slide, please. And since 2020, these four years, we've raised through Power to Give Day for Lake County now 690,000. And these are the organizations that, that see funding through Power to Give Day. Next slide, please. So every year, Power to Give Day, Governor Polis declares that day, Power to Give Day in Colorado. By December 5th, it's Power to Give Day in the state of Colorado. So we also did the same thing here. We had the city of Leadville and Lake County Government declared December 5th, Conde Gieff Day in Lake County, Leadville, just to raise awareness about giving on Conde Gieff Day. So that was kind of the fun that we did. We did it here in the council tables. We had a little, a little bit there. Next slide, please. We got some PR out of that. We had, um, Matt Renew from Channel Nine came up and did a little special on the Conde Gieff Day, um, that was broadcast throughout the state. He, um, did a little feature on the food pantry at St. George. So we got a little extra outside of Lake County awareness about the importance of supporting the county charities there. Next slide. So we also have a grant program. Um, since 2017, we have awarded 147 grants totaling 446 of them. Now, every year, the city of Leadville has contributed to the community fund specifically to support this grant program. Next slide, please. And this year, we awarded 76,540, um, dollars to 29 organizations. These are, you can see the list there. Organizations that rece, that received grants. We had 30 requests totaling 178,000. We awarded 76,000 and thank you again to the cities that contributed, uh, funds to support this grant program. Next slide, please. One of the great things that happened back in 2019, John Cummings, who was the founder of Copper Mountain, Eldor, many resorts in the country, Park City Resort, came to Leadville and he's, he was very interested in his workforce, lives here, is supporting the workforce. And he set up a four-year grant program. $200,000 for four years, 50,000 a year. We had to match that through charitable contributions to get their 50. And, um, so and he specified that 25 of the 50 every year goes to this grant program, which is the power. And then $25,000 goes to our down, the community fund down. And we just finished our fifth year through this program. And through this, it just shows the power of matching brands. We've raised 985,000. Since, uh, this is the fifth year that we just finished now. And we've awarded, uh, 28 copper grants through this program, 125,000. And we, during this period, we contributed 250,000 to Lake County Community Fund Endowment. Next slide, please. Um, last year in February, we, uh, the services of Grant Writing Team, Katie Santa Brozio, and her project social impact to do grant research, grant writing outside of tremendous money out. And so we wanted to, it takes time, it takes research, it takes. So since February 2023, we have raised for Lake County 1.2 million. Almost 1.3 million there. And these are six grants that we've awarded. Uh, we, we received, uh, $850,000 from the congressional spending came in. Parts four. Uh, Leadville Lake County Regional Housing. But these are the priorities, rural housing, early childcare, non-profit, city building, and support and strength for the Latinx community and their end leadership. Next slide, please. So these are the awards that have come in so far. 50,000 from congressional directed spending, 34, 35,000 to establish the new, uh, Lake County, Lake County Education Fund, which is our childcare initiative. Nation. Next slide, please. Uh, we also received from the Latino Community Foundation, Colorado, non-infrastructure funding, 71,060 there. And that's through the government funding that came in through that. Um, Colorado Health Foundation awarded $300,000 over a three-year period. Uh, this was for the Derricks, Latinx, and to support their hiring staff and in general operating expenses to get them up and going. Uh, next slide, please. So so far this year, these are the grant, the grant work that we've submitted so far. We submitted $2 million congressional directed spending proposal through Senators Hicken, Cooper Bennett, and Representative Brittany Patterson uh, on behalf of the sanitation. We just found out today that Brittany Patterson has four bid back for the Posable Operations Committee. That's a huge step. That doesn't mean we're gonna get the $2 million. It doesn't mean we're gonna get the grant, but it's very favorable. That's very good. We submitted a grant to the Temple View Foundation, 35,000, uh, to support the Lake County, Lake County Education. So we need to keep that as a sustainable. And looking ahead, on Thursday, we're doing an event here. You're all invited. It's a tour of, uh, data and light of Lake County. It's for primarily elected officials from outside of Lake County to create awareness of some of our challenges are, um, what some of the opportunities are. So we're going to, uh, we're doing a little panel discussion. We have representatives from Senator Hicken, Cooper Bennett, and, um, that are, that are gonna be here, but we're gonna talk about childcare. We're gonna tour, uh, right start. And then we're going to St. George to talk a little about food security issues. And this is a program that will go 11 o'clock to 1:30. If any of you are interested, please let me know. Love to have you. We're gonna, it starts tomorrow. Uh, so anyway, that's coming up Thursday. Uh, next slide, please. And one of the chief charges that we realized throughout is And one of the chief judges that we realized throughout is with our wonderful community, our demographic. We want to increase the representations of our nonprofit to represent our communities. And one of the challenges, challenges. That many people, particularly first generation immigrants, don't understand what is a nonprofit. So the goal of this Leadville Leads Program was to provide education on what a nonprofit is. How does it work? What are the passions? Because where many people come. The nonprofit sector is unique to the United States, but it is our social safety net. You don't see homeless people in Europe or in Scandinavia because the government doesn't. In our country, it is a nonprofit sector, it's our social safety net. So we felt very important to try to reach out to our community and and have an education program. What is a five oh one C three? What is financial management? What is volunteerism? What does it need to serve? Uh was the goal of that. Next slide please. And there were, there were four top areas that we did. Uh we brought in speakers for each of these four seminars that recognized national leaders in each of these areas. Volunteerism, financial management, fundraising, it was bilingual. And we had a total attendance of thirty-nine local residents participated in that Leadville Leads Program. And next slide please. Mark your calendar, September seventh Saturday is our community dinner. So you're all pleased, we'll be getting the word out, sponsoring table. It's a fun traditional event. And next slide please. I just wanna thank the city of Leadville for the funding that they provided Lake County Community Fund. Since we really got going in two thousand and eighteen, uh for me personally, what a privilege it is to serve this community, to serve you. And out of this ninety thousand, eight ninety, this past year, two thousand thirteen, um two thousand, uh I mean, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. Lake County Government has supported us with fifty-four thousand dollars, which has been tremendous, which has gone towards our grant program. Has gone towards our grant writing, grant research efforts that we've, we've been doing. So I just wanna express my sincere appreciation on behalf of your support. And then the final slide there. And and these are supporters of the community and. Uh just wanna thank you all and for all you're doing. This is a special community. And I've just been honored to, to serve and serve all of you. Hope I didn't take too much time. I was waiting for the hook.
You know, I just kept boarding it a little bit because it was, it was really interesting.
We have a great story and there's a lot of information. If there's any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. McQuarrie?
One though, I wanted to say on the, you know, early care and education fund, really express the passion that we're currently experiencing. Stacy Petty, who really put in the committee that they have into this early child. And education fund. And as you know, the age is between zero and five, the most critical time in human development. And it's just, that's such a critical age and it's been a real. They've done it for this one. Thank the city for supporting.
Thank you so much, Sean.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is Adam Duchamp? Yes, you are.
I'm here.
Yay. Next is a presentation um regarding kind of the ongoing city-county dark skies project.
Yeah. Thank you so much, Mayor. And thank you so much, City Council. Um I am at home. Wrestling my four and one-year-old while my sick wife lays in bed. So I apologize. This is gonna be more. We'll call this more of a conversation than a full-on presentation. As a marketing guy, it hurts me to not have a PowerPoint presentation, but I'm not gonna do that to you all tonight. So yeah, I'll just give you a little bit of background. Uh for anyone who's not familiar, the International Dark Sky uh Alliance, um or Association, they have. Uh sort of a certification process um for places that are interested in getting um, you know, sort of. Any place within their community certified as dark sky, um certified dark sky. And what that means is you meet the minimum criteria for um uh light pollution in terms of. Folks being able to experience a beautiful night sky, right? We're uh fairly lucky in this community and a lot of Lake County where uh you can get up to ninety-two percent total darkness or total dark sky. Uh and I know this because um at the beginning of this past school semester. Uh I was able to engage with one of Cooper Malazi's students from CMC. Who was interested in data collection and also interested in sort of um sustainability in the outdoor industry. And uh he and I came up with um a project for him throughout the semester. To work on some data collection for a potential dark sky application. Now, the application process for uh the Dark Sky Association is is fairly robust. Um and so the first step is to sort of start to understand the community's interest in dark sky. Uh and then to start doing some data collection. So over the course of this semester, uh Elliot Gorsuch is his name. Um he, Elliot went throughout Lake County into seven, seven to ten different locations. And uh took dark sky readings uh with an SQM meter. This is a, a meter that is attenuated to sort of understand light pollution. Uh and ambient light. And you can't go on a night where there's clouds. You can't go on a night where there's moon. You can't go on, you know, uh like, there's, there's quite a few criteria in terms of what limits when you can collect data. But he was able to collect uh over forty data points um throughout Lake County. To uh come to our current findings that we do have areas of Lake County specifically down in the south of the county. So in the Twin Lakes area uh where the average uh for dark sky is ninety-two percent total darkness. So uh that's a really, really strong um start for us in terms of. Working towards an application with the International Dark Sky Association. So we talked with them. We've got some mentorship hours with them, Elliot and I. And they basically told us, you know, listen, you need one year's worth of primary data collection. And you are well on your way to be able to submit an application. Um and we could basically start with a, an application that creates a dark sky reserve. So. We basically say that Twin Lakes uh to Hayden Meadows is sort of an area that's already been designated dark sky. That's called the Dark Sky Reserve. And then we can show, what we have to show is that there's enough public interest and public will. To try and continue these efforts throughout Lake County. And you know, in having some initial conversations with the county, there's definitely some, there is interest in over time, sort of. Further bolstering our current dark sky compliant lighting code that we have within community planning and development for the county. Um and then, you know, I would like through happenstance, I was bringing this up to the tourism panel a few months ago. And Dana saw it on the agenda and she reached out and said, you know, I'd love to chat about this because uh the city is also interested in sort of understanding. What dark sky compliance or what dark sky code could look like in the city of Leadville. Now, you know, we all understand that like, in a perfect world, every, every light would turn off right at, you know, the start of twilight. And they would be off until sunrise and, you know, the birds would sing and the world would be a beautiful, harmonious place. But the reality is what the Dark Sky Alliance wants you to work towards is, is sort of a plan. Towards compliance and a plan towards having commercial businesses turn off their lights at ten PM, the ten PM curfew. Having um light, light poles, so flag poles, have them be downlit rather than uplit. And just uh doing an inventory of exactly how much uh lighting. Code discrepancy you, you currently have. And then being able to say what it would take to get yourself with things compliance for dark sky. So the reason why I'm here tonight is to let you all know that Elliot Gorsuch, he's now, um he just graduated from CMC. And he's interested in staying here over the summer and continuing his work on dark sky. So that would mean doing the dark sky. Uh sort of primary readings throughout Lake County, uh continuing to build the narrative for an international dark sky. Uh association uh application. And then uh also in, as well as doing a full catalog of all of the lighting. Uh throughout Lake County. So this is sort of like literally going block by block and business by business throughout Leadville and Lake County. And doing an inventory of what our lighting looks like. So this includes our fields. Uh this includes, I mean, it's, it's a pretty monstrous project. Um but he is a extremely smart data-oriented human that uh wants to turn all this data into, you know, a bit of a heat map. And uh basically be able to build a narrative of how we could work towards dark sky um compliance. So um he is asked for um basically three thousand dollars, which would. Basically start in June and go through the end of August and even into a few weeks into September to do this. Uh work for us, to do this cataloging. And he has put together a whole proposal, uh and I did submit that. To Dana, uh and I believe Lori as well. So um if you don't have it in your packets tonight, I'm more than happy to make sure that City Council gets it. Um but you know, he, he fully sort of lays out his scope of work and what, you know, what the return on investment would be. But it would be a massive lift for us as a community if we were interested in pursuing dark sky. Uh because just to open an application with them, you need to sort of paint a picture of how your community is committed to. You know, taking the steps to move the ball. Again, it's not saying, see, look, we have shielded lighting on everything and we already meet this. Uh the requirements throughout the community, but just showing that there are areas where we have dark sky. We can already paint that picture, but being able to sort of say that, hey, the, the city and the county are interested in this, that would really help our. Application and being able to just even talk from a narrative perspective about having conversations like this with City Council. And understanding where you all stand with this, it further helps potentially um our application. So. That's a ma- majority of what I wanted to lay out to you. Um and so the proposal for you all would be. Um if that cost could be split between the city and the tourism panel um in terms of uh. The, you know, fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred to continue this work in promoting dark sky uh within our community. But I welcome any questions, feedback, et cetera, on this concept.
What questions do you all have for Mr. Duchamp regarding this, this proposed partnership?
I've got one question. Adam, this is Rebecca. Um does the catalog that the student would propose during this summer include residential properties? Or are you just looking at businesses and schools?
No, it actually does need to be a, a thorough catalog.
So it's comprehensive, any outdoor lighting in the county?
That's correct. Yep. So it would, it, yep.
Thank you.
And that does involve the lights on my porch that I already know I'm gonna be taking down.
Did you have a question? Adam, I um, I'm wondering, is any part of your and Elliot's consideration um. Looking out for that possible um dark, dark sky Colorado um grant for mentorship?
Yes. Yeah, exactly. So and, and you know, conversations I've had with the dark sky folks, that um. That grant for mentorship would, would come available in the fall, I believe, is the next cycle. So we would be extraordinarily well-positioned with this to be able to basically just. Um you know, parlay uh all of the work of Elliot into the next round of mentorship. To make, you know, this application, not a, it's never a slam dunk, but to definitely sort of bolster our, our opportunity to sort of like. Cruise into the finish line, which i- if I haven't made it very clear, you need a year's worth of primary collected data that is um. Sort of verifiable in terms of GPS coordinates and um there's a lot of sort of like very specific. Information that they want to know that you've um tested for. And we have shared that data that we've already collected with the, with the IDA and they, they say that our, our data meets their criteria. So.
And yes, I do, but it's more of an interim question, I guess. Are we still following the process? I don't know. I don't know how form-like was or to what extent we've been following, but are we still doing the whole way quarterly for? What's coming and then?
So the, the, and so I've wrestled with this because I know this was sort of a. I think it's a good idea for us to try to pool our general requests, but this month. We had two sort of time-sensitive, like Elliot would like to start before. The date that we identified as when people would come and ask for money. And so I didn't want. I didn't want that delay to possibly endanger the, 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 the availability of this young man to forward at least a. A project that I think would benefit both the city and the county quite a bit, you know, as well as like the high school musical. I think what this is, I think what I'd like to do is when July comes around is, it is to kind of. See who else comes up with that and see if we can craft a little bit more, more appropriately timed. Um because some of these, like this is, this was a surprise. High school musical is scheduled, so we can plan ahead for that. But I, I would like to have, talk about, not right now, but some sort of flexibility for the kind of surprise and it's sort of time-sensitive for us to consider.
Yeah, mo- mostly just uh I've seen by the presentation, this will tend instead of so. Call that, is that, no, I see that this is also in our discussions sessions. We're not actually having the.
We're not voting. What, what I would like is was just to kind of gauge everyone's interest and if people felt like. They, they felt like this was a reasonable move for um for the city to engage in a partnership with the tourism. Uh panel this way, that then it would uh, if the resolution would appear on our consent agenda.
I think this is an important issue for Lake County. Yeah. Me three.
And four. Then what I'd like to do, Lori, is, is see if we, and I can write it if you want, but a resolution dedicating uh fifteen hundred dollars. To, to this project. Mr. Gorsuch's uh requested something.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you so much, Adam. Super excited about all of this.
I really appreciate your time and consideration. Um and my daughter will be thrilled to know that I can still put her to bed. So thank you all. I really, really appreciate your time.
Thanks, Adam.
All right, take care.
Goodbye. All right. Our last presentation and discussion is, is a little meatier.
Small menu?
A little healthier, a little more. Little, there's a few more numbers in. Okay.
Uh so good evening for our, and so I'm Jacob McShaw, is planning director for the city level. Um so the goal for tonight is to give you an update to code amendments that I'd like to bring before you this summer. And do this in presentation format so we don't have to come back for two hours later all week. Um so I'm hoping that um I'm trying to give this ten minutes, but hopefully I can see if you have any goal, just to see if you have any concerns with these two proposed amendments. Before we proceed to a public hearing process. And there'll be a lot of stuff that's been pulling here in the process. So diving right in. This is, uh we're talking about two proposed ordinances here. So we're calling these the housing variety amendments and the development agreements. And uh and most of council has seen these um in some format before. And so in terms of the housing variety amendments, this is um not a new chapter, but amendment to the existing zoning code in then seven chapters. I had specifically targeting housing, uh and more specifically ADUs and duplexes. And then if it would result in just something that for these smaller projects, they're coming through with a stamp that I don't mean, it's not coming in front of you. Uh so it's lining up the code to be more reminiscent for housing, um specifically those, those types of structures. The other ordinance is um related to development agreements. We've, we've talked about this recently. Um we had a work session this recently. Um but this would create a new chapter in the zoning code, um titled development agreements. And it would uh target unique developments and also kind of um public benefits that we may not be able to anticipate right now and may need in the future. Uh for specific projects. And it also definitely targets community. And that, this will result in a, uh in an approval process for, for projects that. Come in front of you, come in front of you only for, this is not something that's approved, that requires. So we'll get into the first amendment, housing variety amendments. Um we've, well, we last saw this in two thousand and twenty-four in August. Uh well, this is to introduce housing variety, the term of infill housing via the practice. And so this is just one of the ways that we can address housing in our toolkit. And so this is just one of the ways that we can address housing in our toolkit. Uh, history of this is, it's this has been going on for a while. Essentially, um, this was originally proposed by one of our nonprofits working with a consultant. Our uh, our planning zoning commission has been working on this since twenty twenty one and thirteen work sessions. City council saw this twice in twenty twenty one. Uh, and then in August of last year. In that last work session where we left this with housing variety amendments, city council was generally okay with those code amendment package. Uh, as it related to ADUs and duplexes. Um, I had concerns about about kind of how this originally came to staff. Uh, from 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 a nonprofit with a certain a certain component of it of of kind of giving away density for these larger projects. I really wanted to find a way to tie that to some kind of commitment to affordable housing, given our landscape environment is different than kind of how how codes are written in front range. Uh, so that came to you as as a proposal for incentive zoning, so developers can voluntarily take advantage of the density bonus. In exchange for a commitment of a certain portion of those units to affordable housing. Uh, there were a lot of great questions and um, and there were some some concerns that indicated that that work session is a good discussion. Staff ended up with basically a to do list of things that I needed to come back and and give you more information, address questions, address concerns. And then I need to work with the planning zoning commission to do that. Long story short, I am uh was limited in staff until just recently. We'll talk about that later. Uh, so uh, so that was eight, eight or nine months ago. Essentially, I haven't been able to make, I haven't done this move. Well, I've done a lot of work, but I haven't been able to do the work that is needed to bring it back you and it's ready. So my concern is we're going to lose momentum. I would like to keep some really important components of this um moving forward possible. So the proposal, or I suppose P and Z, the proposal is to uh to strike the the incentive zoning for three or more unit development. And just focus on these amendments that are targeted at ADUs and duplexes, uh, which, you know, that's a um, that is a type of development. That we can, I think we can see the the, we can expect the private sector could provide, I can pause about that every day. Um, about ADUs and duplexes. Uh, and the the issue is, we'll get into this, but right now our density in our code does not does not allow this. So. This would um come in front of you essentially how you saw it la- last fall, but without the incentive zoning that we we talked about previously. I think we will, I'll try to come back to you at a later time with that, um, but just won't keep moving this forward possibly. Um, so these are some slides that were in your slide deck last um last fall in the work session, but essentially, you know, these are all the different types of. Ways that we can consider addressing housing across the housing spectrum, all of our different needs. Uh, don't expect you to read all of this, but. If you stay with me on this screen, my click here in green is a little bit small, sorry about that. Um, but the green is what, in terms of all the different housing types that we need and what um, th- this is what this code amendment. Package addresses in green and red showing us removed, that's what we're removing. So we're still trying to target some specific types of our housing, uh, you know, the housing spectrum needs. We look at, you know, what that looks like in terms of our physical environment, and these are all different types of structures that you can have. Um, we need everything from single family all the way up to, you know, in large means towns, you know, midrises, et cetera. Um, what this code amendment package is is doing is originally, when we, you last saw this, it was targeting everything that circled in black. Um, today, uh, the P and Z and and staff is proposing basically just uh what's certainly black without the the red. Um, area structure, so just ADUs and just duplexes. So those structure types, to see how the visual of what that looks like. Um, I'm going to fly through this part in the interest of time. This is all in your packet. This is specifics of what is being proposed. Everything from um density limitations, setbacks, minimum lot size. Um, uh, per uh, basic floor areas for ADUs, height limits. Um, this is the piece in red that is being um that are proposing to strike to keep this moving forward. Uh, this addresses purple apartments in terms of the alley. Uh, and this is really the the critical issue with 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 why we need to do this. Um, right now in our code, we have a very primitive code for ADUs and duplexes, um, which is we we allow it by right. But the way you do our, when we do our density calculations on our smallest lot size, considering they have historically quiet, small lots. The density calculation per lot doesn't work. That's that's explained in your packet. But essentially what this would would do would be increase the density limitations for ADUs and duplexes for so for two. So that 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 second unit uh can fit on one of our smallest. Um, getting into some some pretty pictures here. This is what our typical block looks like in level and we have, we have some variety in our blocks. It's kind of an average block. Uh, and this is what the density looks like at nineteen dwelling units per acre right now, where the house, every house in that block. Um, was built on every lot and had a garage. What this, if we were to, that's kind of pretty respective. Um, so that's fully, fully built out right now. Uh, including your garage, which is not considered a dwelling unit. F, F thirty, sorry, with this proposed code amendment. Um, this is what the density would look like on one of our blocks if it was built. So I'm proposing that that is allowed to go to forty dwelling units per acre. It's a little complicated, stay with me, but when you calculate that on a per lot basis, it really only results in maximum thirty two units on any any of our blocks. But we don't calculate it. Um, basically, we would calculate it per lot basis, but it's expressed in terms of per acre. So this is what that that would look like. Uh, green is essentially, you know, a ADU above a garage, the rest of them could be, you know, it would be, it would be basements. Um, so I just wanted to kind of show you kind of in the build form what that, what that, what that actually looks like. If this were to be fully built off on average city block, I might need to, I need to wrap up. I need to keep moving here. Um, so I've. This is the slide deck from the the presentation last fall. Um, this is the kind of part that has been struck. Uh, so we don't have to worry about that. We'll skip past this. Uh, so this is going to move to the the second half and running a bit late here. In terms of uh development agreements, this is the second ordinance we've. This is, I won't go into as much detail, but we've most recently discussed this um at a work session in March. Uh, so what we last discussed continues to be, continues to be proposed. Uh, the purpose of this ordinance would essentially be to um provide a way for city council to enter into a voluntary agreement, voluntary in both parties, both the city council. And the property owner or developer um to to basically exchange a public benefit that we law- lawfully cannot require. In exchange for um, in exchange for a waiver that would not otherwise be allowed. Um, the history of this is essentially, this is proposed by staff last fall, started working in the city attorney's office on this. Um, got to a point where the city, city attorney's office was comfortable with this. And uh, and that included some recommendations for limitations on both the public benefits and code waivers. And uh, the ordinance was drafted. Uh, city dip council saw this work session, we just had bullet points, we did not have ordinance. But then I reviewed this with planning zoning commission twice. Planning zoning commission is supportive of the concept. However, and this is a key point, planning zoning commission, um, you should consider planning zoning commission. Uh, prefers that the development agreements do not have limitations. So in other words, um, development agreements should be limited to code waivers for building. For density um for vested property. They think that that should be opened up. Uh, and also in terms of um, in terms of public benefits, they did not think that city council should be limited. In being able to receive just just community housing, just land or easements. Um, and. Direct third levels, um, or sorry, infrastructure, public infrastructure, like crosswalks. So just keep that in mind, um, that that staff and the city attorney, we would like to see this move forward, planning zoning commission. Um, does have a preference to keep this more flexible versus limitations that are there currently uh included in your pack. Uh, so this is just getting to the the bullet points that we discussed in that work session. Essentially, um, this is something that that we can do because it's authorized, they say statute. It would be better if this is still not included. So that's what this ordinance does. And this would be completely at the city council's discretion to to use this tool. There's no obligation for you to to uh to enter into a development group, uh, the developer. Um, in terms of process, this would, I think it's important that this. That if you were to enter into the development agreement, it goes to a fully embedded public process in this tool. Um, if it is going to be used, it has to be used in a public environment. And so. Public, if anyone who could potentially be affected by the development agreement, if they have a chance to live public comment. Um, so it's will be a, it's a legislative process and you would pass it via work. That would require two reviews. And then, as I mentioned, uh, these are the commitments and waivers that uh the city attorney is recommending be included. And and staff is is fine with this, but again, planning zoning commission is referring um that city council not just be limited to those public benefits. And those waivers that are. Uh, so wrapping up here, couple minutes over, uh, I'm going to zoom in on this just a little bit. Uh, this is a graphic. Um, it's included in your package. People don't feel like I've spent a lot of time on this right now. Uh, but this essentially compares what these two ordinances do. At planning zoning commission, we had a discussion. Uh, when, why do we need both of these ordinances? So this graphic, it gets in, it gets into a bit of detail. It's essentially showing how. These ordinances are separate. They affect different areas of code. They do different things. Um, in the interest of time, I'm going to, I'm going to fly past. But just know that that this is when you're packing, you can refer to that if needed, if you have questions. So in terms of schedule, I would like to bring this um through to you in July and be preceded by a public hearing at planning zoning commission, which is required. Uh, in June. And so this is a, this is a, you know, not not the fastest schedule, but this would, but it would allow for sufficient time for us to consider. Um, comments, incorporate those into the, to the next meeting. Uh, this can be, this can be pushed back a little bit if needed. So the main thing that I'd like to get from you tonight um is to see is, was this sufficient amount of information for you to understand what is being proposed? Oh, that happened to go through a work session. Uh, if so, can you communicate any concerns that you might have? Before we proceed to the public hearing process. Um, and then also is this is, you know, essentially, are you available on those dates to participate in the public hearing process? Um, that's it. Any take questions? Thank you.
You very much. Questions, concerns, if I may do?
I would say, um. You, are you going to be presenting at these meetings, the um P and Z proposed and the attorney approved? Um, versions of each or? If you want to continue.
I cer- certainly can. I think I'd like to, to any any kind of uh reference that city council can communicate. Now, would be appreciated. I I think the city attorney, city attorney is is highly recommending to sit to city council. That those um, those parameters, those limitations, those guardrails would be included in this ordinance. Uh, and and I can, I can go into their their list of reasons why. Um, and I I think staff understands that we. Where planning zoning commission is coming from. I think that uh, if we were to um proceed with this as proposed. I think there is an opportunity to always come back and 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 tweak this, uh, and just like any ordinance. And so I think s- staff is aligned with the city attorney in keeping those limitations for now. But here in the planning zoning commission saying that, hey, if this doesn't work the way that we that we want it to, if it's not incentivizing developers. Uh, or voluntarily proposing a hard to be restricted housing that we've talked about in some other projects. Uh, then maybe we need to consider loosening up those parameters a bit so that we can, we can get into private sector by those. For example, so I would support it as proposed. Um, keeping in mind the 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 uh. The comments of maybe coming back and advising us later if it doesn't work as expected.
Uh, and that's just for development agreements. I, yeah, that's perfectly fine. Uh, the one thing that I noticed, um, just in my graph that you made. Um, is the uh three plus units differential between the work session and what we uh currently have. I think that's based on, yeah, P and Z proposed. Um. I. If I'm understanding you right, basically what you were saying and, you know, please, among it. We would be allowed to just say yes or no to any development because it's the development agreement. Um, or. Or is this more so leaning towards as the development agreement? Hey, that's where I'm a little bit more confused on. Like, who is this targeting? Some variety outside of just allowing for ADUs to exist.
That so, you know, in terms of addressing our our housing crisis, you know, there there are all these variety of ways to do this. You know, reason housing authority is 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 focusing on on some components and there are other. Um, ways that we can address low income housing. I think the expectation is that the housing variety amendments would would allow. The private sector to do what they're already requesting to do is to build accessory dwelling units, to build duplexes. And by the nature of that, like an accessory dwelling unit cannot be, cannot be sold by its very nature. It it must remain on the same property. And so therefore, there's an expectation that there's a good likelihood that we, we, this is not proposed to control that the deed restriction. Uh, but there's an expectation that, you know, that that would be rented and that would help our our housing situation. Um, both with occupants, uh, people who own their homes and it's helping with the affordability. Um, or providing um essentially, you know, a small square footage area that can, you know, can be, we have other controls, we'll have shelter, et cetera. So so the the, this is targeted towards the private sector, providing small infill housing. Um, that that we would not be able necessarily provide, it's like the regional housing authority going out and blowing twenty units at a time, thirty units at a time. And it's dispersing that housing throughout the community, which is the best way to provide uh infill infill tangible.
I guess the the difference that I'm specifically at for is the three plus units basically are, the P and Z proposed currently allows for. Developers to develop multiple ADUs more than just three in the development. I I, I guess that's where I'm lost. I'm looking specifically. Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, sorry, I made a different question. Um, go on, just go back to this graphic. So the, you know, the the housing variety and we're targeting the ADUs and the. And and duplexes. So these structure types were originally that that they have to pose, uh, in a, in addition to that. Um, although proposing a density bonus, so if someone want to do more, they're going to do three or more units. So that can come in the form of townhouse. Uh, that's probably the most likely, sort of you, essentially where you have attached houses that are facing facing the street. Um, that they could get those additional units if they took advantage of the density bonus. Um, so that's, that's being struck with that, you know, that three plus unit development. Uh, would not necessarily be two ADUs on the same property because by definition, you can't have two ADUs. So there has to be one. Um, so three or more unit development, what that would look like would be townhomes, apartment buildings, where multiple units, all one property. Um, or townhomes, condominiums. Uh, yeah, and those are, everything on the kind of the right hand side of of this.
And I, I think the reason why I was concerned at that time was um in the off chance that there was developers who were, you know, kind of taking advantage of the ADU system and. Aren't necessarily targeting the groups of people that we would want to target. At least that's my understanding. It was, I do. But. I, that that would have even have addressed it. So I'm, I'm fine with the three plus or the P and Z proposed. Currently, I just wanted to get that clarification to, and better understand, make sure I was understanding the problem.
Maybe I think the other thing to consider is that ADUs and duplexes in terms of character impacts, I think we could all agree that they're much less likely to to. Um, right out of the gate, have significant changes to the, to the character of our built environment that we know right now. Uh, you know, you you can't address the single, I'm sorry, the housing prices with just single family. Um, but at the same time, you know, let those character, uh, you know, it was all, everything was townhomes and attached homes that remain much more dense. It would obviously have a very different character. Um, so this is this ADUs and duplexes is a small step up from what our existing built character. Um, that would probably not have huge character impacts to our community. And we already, we already have existing duplexes and existing accessory dwelling units in our, in our communities. It's not introducing a new structure that we're planning these.
Chapin, can you talk a little bit more about character and generally, I'm fine with this approach, but I know the last time we had our work session, there were several comments about. Thinking about what structures look like, especially outside of the historic district, so that we don't get a bunch of cinder block, modern being housing. So would that, would that be covered here somewhere or elsewhere in code?
Yeah, so what we talked about at that meeting was infill, and and I, you know, I think we we definitely talked about that in the context of. Of three plus unit development. And so, you know, if you were having your townhomes, if you're having the place condominiums. Uh, kind of everything that, you know, that you're seeing on the, the right hand side of, uh, starting here on the spectrum moving right. Um, that those are the um types of structures that could really have character impact, especially if there was, if there were not any. So planning zoning commission, I think we had at least three work sessions following council to talk about, you know, variety of things that. That council brought up, but was including design documents. And where we, where we arrived is that. You know, we now is going in the city council session that last fall that, before we get. before we get too far along with that, we wanted to check in, because we're about to, if city council support about it, things are gonna get really busy and expensive and etc., we're gonna be writing the community housing chapter. Uh, so we acknowledged we had written the housing chapter, but then incentives on. Um, what we talked about, planning and zoning commission after city council, was that within the community housing chapter that we were already going to have to write, if you're doing a community housing project, taking advantage of the density bonus, so that you could build the structures that, you know, within that red line to the right, then you would then be subject to the design documents, so any, any project taking advantage of the density bonus, um, but, but, um, interpreted as far as we can. And we didn't, we didn't, we didn't come up, come up with, you know, draft design documents out for anything outside of our sort of district, and that was part of why scaling this project back to the smaller structures that we've already, that, that are already being built on some of our larger, our larger lots. Um, but we would really like to have on our smaller lots to help bring more, um, you know, this, this practice, like this, they'll have.
Okay. And then on the incentive zoning, I still like the idea, I can understand and appreciate why it, it's, uh, maybe too complex to include it in this, but is there any, uh, plan for considering it further in the future?
To bring incentives zoning back?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely, so, you know, essentially, you know, I spend most, most of my day answering the nine questions, phone calls and emails, but people who wanna build projects, putting ADUs and duplexes in one bill, uh, and so, so, you know, I would be able to work on this as staff capacity increases and that is going to be happening, um, but we may actually, you know, still need to bring in consultants in the planning and zoning commission. Um, actually said they would prefer to, um, have a consultant work in tandem with me on, um, on a, the housing variety amendments, specifically the community housing chapter that would be needed. Uh, so yes, we would tend to bring that back from council, is that capacity allows, um, but I wanna do it the right way, and so I'll most likely be coming to city council. So I don't think we'll be able to do it this year, we'll come to city council with a, um, with budget considerations for higher, if I was hiring a consultant to help with this project, what that, in terms of fee, what that would look like, and what we need a budget for, and what we need to do.
Okay. Thanks. Chayvin, um, in the very few interactions I've had with, um, places where development agreement might be, might be applicable, it's, it's only been, you know, like with like more, more height than the max height allows. And I remember this discussion with planning and zoning about wanting the, the desire to get rid of tho- those kind of guardrails. My question is, with the three guardrails as listed right now, in your experience, eh, have there been any significant number of requests that would fall outside of those? Cause they seem pretty broad, to me, especially the public.
No, the, the main, the main issue that, you know, that I've had to communicate you know, time and time again to, to those, you know, they're, they're, they're not the majority of the phone calls that I receive every now and then, I get a call assistant, says, yeah, I mean, buying them in modular deed restricted housing, it's paying my restriction, we find them, and they've got a big piece of property, they're getting a sweet deal on or something. Um, and often times new properties do not go on the market, and they just have a front end, etc. Um, and so, you know, the question, you know, comes up all the time, you know, hey, how many units can I fit on this property if I'm doing modular, you know, hundred percent paying my restricted, um, project? And I'll do the density calculation, say, okay, on this site, you can get extra improvements, say, oh, if the economy scale, I don't need to do this improvements. So, um, so, I mean, I would, I would say absolutely that these, um, three, uh, waivers, or really just two waivers are the most common, um, waivers that people see when they're kind of scoping out whether or not they can do a project, any issues that they, that they encounter. Um, and I think that, you know, when we're, when we're kind of entering this world of, of, you know, the housing crisis, addressing the housing crisis, trying to figure out ways to build housing is one of our ways to address the housing crisis. You know, the economies of scale are, are huge in that conversation, and, um, not that, you know, we need to have big and tall and large, um, you know, condominium buildings to just address our housing crisis, um, that, it's not, you know, I'm, I'm saying, but when, especially the private sector is coming in, they're trying to figure out, okay, how can we make this project pencil, especially if they're voluntarily proposing to, to deed restricted? Um, like we, you know, we've discussed, recently, once we discussed, um, voluntarily proposing to do that. And, and, you know, when, when they're trying to figure out how many units they can get to make that project pencil, the economies of scale, um, um, definitely benefit from having increased, increased density in building it. And I would say other, otherwise, and maybe even including building type, I would even say even including density, cons- considering our built environment, zoning code is, is already fairly permissive in a lot of ways. So I think that goes, first, we answer your question, like, for example, our side flip, our side setbacks of three feet. Um, and that's the minimum distance you pretty much need to walk shoulder width and carry the ladder to maintain siding, etc. So that's just an example, our zoning code is, is already very permissive in a lot of ways. I think these are kind of like the last remaining pieces in terms of the housing variety amendments, a lot of private sector visits, it's the counties, these kind of one-off projects that are very unique, where a developer comes in, they have a unique funding source, grants, etc., and say, okay, in order to make this housing project pencil, I need, I need to make it more dense, this allows them to, to do that, and the ways that we can anticipate, they will need to right now.
Let's start, thank you, that certainly makes me more comfortable with considering the, 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 the attorney's advice to keep the guardrails. Okay. Um, yes, go, no, I was saying.
Um, I, I'd love this naturally, and particularly the synergy between the two. Um, and I think you said something really important that I want, that I want to emphasize, that it has the potential, um, so think of a phosphor and family, you know, being able to run out their garage, work their garage, of alleviating that phosphor while also providing, uh, a market rate housing for a retail worker, a teacher, like, it's fantastic, and I support both.
Um, any further questions? Cause I would like to get to Chayvin's three questions for us.
Would a detached ADU, if someone were to short-term rent it, would that be considered an owner occupied or non-owner occupied?
Oh, that's a good question.
License.
I'm, you, I hope I can answer that on the block.
Okay.
I, I, I'm, I love to refer to the code, get four hours.
Sure, yeah, you could, you can follow, I'm, I'm interested in the answer to that question too. It doesn't necessarily change my thinking on anything, because I know we have numerical limits on those, but I was just curious.
Well, I think it, it would potentially, if it's owner occupied, there is no numerical limit on how many people could have, uh, short term, so I mean, even, even then, that, that means, if the answer is no, for me, I would like for that consideration to be and like, including this also different change to, uh, that specific zoning law. I don't know how big or small of a mess that is, but it's, I'm sorry. Yeah, it basically, if, if there is a, if living in your home and having an ADU, and ADU is considered as living in your home, putting you in class one for the short-term rental zoning, uh, current, or the short-term rental law, I would want a modification to that if we were going to include this, because I would hate for the whole, I mean, whole purpose of this is to hopefully rent out units, and if people are just saying, well, it's owner occupied, so it's, I don't, there's no restrictions, so I'm the owner.
Discussion, because I had a second. Uh, in our short term, this chapter five, to owner occupied means a property on which an owner uses it as a dwelling unit of any kind or portion thereof as the owner's legal primary residence.
Hmm, so what happened?
Well, I think that, uh, I don't think an ADU is owner occupied in that definition, because the owner would not use the ADU as their primary residence. It's the dwelling unit, it's not the property. I think we had this debate before.
They, they recall that, and I think that we, we can also, we can, I can speak with the city attorney about, uh, just considering that and making sure there's not an entry loophole. And so that we need to make that clarification with this ordinance, and could be a sentence or two, uh, I think we, we should, we can definitely spend some time, make sure we have that covered.
Cool.
Yeah, I think we have had faced this issue, I can't remember when, but we debated it and felt as though the ADU was not considered the person's dwelling unit, because they're not actually living in the ADU. Is it defined as the property as a first dwelling unit, I can see why it would get confusing.
All right, let's move on to the, the questions, so that Chayvin can move forward. Um, are we supportive of the housing variety amendments?
Yes.
Yes.
The P and Z ones?
Yeah.
Uh, are we supportive of the draft development agreements ordinance?
Yes.
Yes.
And supportive of the schedule for review and public hearings?
Yeah, yes. Yes.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Let's ride.
You.
Thanks for all that.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Let's have a picture.
That was really helpful, yeah.
Thank you, Chris.
Hey.
Yeah.
So are we voting on those tonight?
No, we're not voting, this was just a discussion, he just, he doesn't want to put in a bunch of work, developing something if we're like, seriously, you know.
So now it becomes the first public here.
Right, so I was just gonna ask what the timetable is for that, because as Christie Global mentioned in the comment, we have folks wanting to house some of our homeless right in, in their ADUs, and it would be nice to just know a rough timeframe of when we could expect.
That's in the
Like second meeting was Ju- July twenty sixth, is that right? Yeah, July sixteenth, and then there's thirty days, those adoptions, those, mid-August. Mid-August, and then the So midsummer.
I see.
Yeah, so someone, someone applied, so after August sixteen, approximately, then, then that, it would be buy right, so they can proceed straight to a building.
Wonderful, thank you.
Midsummer, presumably we'll get to summer, eventually, I've been watching this incredible snow, this ninety degrees. Let's move on to department reports, um, but be, before we actually get rolling, I, I do want to say that you know, you all know I love department reports really keenly, um, but I also know that they take a tremendous amount of our meeting time. Um, so what I'm gonna propose that we do is, we all have in our packet stuff that the different departments have submitted. Um, and what I would like to do is kind of go through the different departments as we usually do, um, and ask the department head to just simply give a few exciting highlights, and then ask you all, like, do you have questions on the whole thing in the packet, so what I don't want to do is spend a lot of time kind of going through some of the things that we could just as easily read. Um, and if we have no questions, then we just won't ask any, and what I want to hear about is, is the exciting highlights.
If there are exciting ones.
Or the exciting, or the, or specific challenges that they feel that council should be aware of. I do ultimately, when we go through strategic planning, what I would like to turn department reports into is reports on their specific department goals, their progress on it, any obstacles they're, uh, encountering, and then, you know, ke- keep this additional information, like you know, what are the stats on the animal shelter, what are the stats for, uh, you know, hours, etc., still in our packet, but we don't. That's, that's my goal, so, at starting that off, I do understand city administrator's report is so wide and ranging, and, you know, this really reflects the thousands of irons that, that our city administrator has in the fire, um, so I really don't want to limit your.
Okay, well, I'm going to, um, request permission from the mayor to lift me and the street department, so that, uh, Ms. Medina can go home and turn off the snow. Is that okay?
As long as, I understand the snowflakes are coming down this week on the street, so maybe our weather will finally change. Okay, let's go for a street department first. Your favorite highlights, Ms. Medina?
Okay, getting, uh, I'll make this quick. The weather is psychotic. It's not, we've been doing everything from athlete fog holes, to flowering, but they have to see. Uh, we've been sweeping streets, we've been doing all this stuff, um, just to be honest on what's going on. Right now, my plan is to take tomorrow, we're to take the snowflakes down, put up the banners for the high school kids. The way this weather is going, it just depends on how cold it is in the morning, and we'll see if we can get that done tomorrow, too. Weather report said it's supposed to warm up the weekend, so we'll get that done. Uh, the streets on, uh, the crosswalk signs are going up tomorrow as well. Uh, the weekend coming up for the holiday, we like to make sure that those are, so those are my plans, but whether it has other things in mind, um.
You need to work.
Yeah, that, I was just gonna say, we just, we saved our back for you, thank you all for including that. Uh, we did go through a very successful demonstration with the company, and we went to clean a certain drain out, but it was done last year on a demonstration, so this trip, it wasn't like that, so we took it to the shop, we cleaned out our gift kit over there, and usually that's a project that takes anywhere from six to seven hours. With the new bathroom, we completed that in about two minutes.
Wow.
And that was with training with everybody figuring out how the, the machine works, you know, and stuff, so it's gonna come very handy. Uh, we've also found out, so we can use it as a long jet to clean culverts rather than just doing the entrances. We'll actually be able to stick, do jet head and everything in there, clean the middle of those culverts out of the wall, so we'll be able to do a lot more with it.
Fantastic.
Um, did not to park bill, invite them to come to my cabins. They had their emergencies, um, digs, so they weren't able to make it, but I did tell them, like, you know, we can help them out at any time, then we will. Uh, but they're just mostly worried about cleaning out their pits when we got water back. We can help out, too.
Great.
Um, pretty much, that's it, we did get a new employee, he's working very well, uh, the guys are taking him under their wings, and they're showing him things and teaching him, so he's, I think he's gonna be okay.
He told me that the job was easy.
Oh, get him started, yeah. We had children, he was right in there with the guys, so, and so, and he's very young, so he's got all that extra energy, and we're gonna
Maybe that's
Um, I don't know, I don't think we have too much, um, just so many things going on now with the streets, uh, clearing up and everything, uh, we're gonna be painting the, uh, curbs and everything within the next week. Hope to try and get that done in the next couple of days, it's gonna be next week before, after we start on then.
Yes, question for Ms. Medina.
Um, so you're painting the curbs, is there a, a, I've heard from a, a few folks about the crosswalks?
That was gonna have to get into C dot. Those are actually, from my understanding of the process, is they actually come in and they burn off the, the crosswalk. And then they put in, and reheat, and put in, they're actually leveled with, like, milled down a little bit. They got the machinery to do that, I think that's part of the agreement with the
Yeah, we, uh, actually, it was, uh, Jason, man, I get shot, had one conversations with C dot, Crosswalks, and sort of C dot, right, Bill came up, and who does maintenance, because we have lots of different, you know, C dot, but who covers the area of work, uh, maintenance and repair, and they have been pushed so far with mine with their painting that they needed to do through Glenwood Canyon, you know, say, uh, painted that all the trucks need to stay in the right-hand lane, so what happened was their regular maintenance project got pushed up, so he anticipated that we were looking at, you know, late summer, early fall, but he did request that we have our, our crosswalks aren't looking great, and so I think I looked at it as well.
So when you mentioned the signs at the crosswalks, are those the crosswalks you're talking about?
Yeah, those are the, uh, restating signs. I think, I think I had to replace two or three of them last year, just lost some, so, they are very effective, though, they're Yeah, they, they do that, the only problem is when the white loads come through, those guys don't, they don't, they'll hit them, they go down and get four. They don't even try. They they'll hit them. They go down and get four. So so we keep an eye on those and.
Unless they hit those and not pedestrians.
Yeah.
Okay, other questions for Mr. Medina?
Is there a paving plan that you'll be able to board? The council in the next month or so, you can see what's in the plans?
Definitely, we're gonna be starting at the sixth, um Harrison, like that one section there. I've been calling C dot to talk to their electrician about that, being that it's that that pad with the wiring and everything. So we may have.
Do you have that half block on the east?
Yeah.
Side. Will there be more paving plans for the year? Do you know? When we guys start the presentation on that.
Um, problem I have with that right now is that every street that I'd like to go look at and get ready, site wise is digging it up. Parkville is digging it up. And what I'm trying to figure out, they're talking about during the top of six three, they want us to kind of go happens with them on the pavement up there, but they're wanting us to pay the bigger chunk of it. Which is, that's a pretty wide section. They only want to pay the little patch. Um, we're gonna have to negotiate with them if we go through that. Um, west side over here. I just got the uh excavation request for sanitation. They want to tear up this very construction. They want to tear up between eight and six street on Pine Streets. That would just.
Again, they were there.
They don't want to do just pots. They want to start at actually ninth street, come down the hill all the way right down the center of Pine Street to Sixth Street. And they're talking almost a full trench all the way down, at least. That's what I'm looking at with this on the meet of the Excel tomorrow, I think meeting tomorrow, these faces tomorrow, with Excel on site wise to find out exactly where they're gonna be because there may be a conflict. Because they're working their way in one of our block. Nor that, and they want to start the other one too, so. I don't care, but in order to try and keep our roads that they're gonna be digging up, we may end up spending a little money. I've got some other, uh, I think my board is still up there. That needs to be updated a little bit more, but it's also gonna depend on what they're gonna be able to settle there. If if we could see an updated board.
Yeah. Sounds like a challenge.
And my understanding is that Parkville was likely to pursue their big project on E six next year, so they're gonna try to get a.
Yeah, I was the latest I've heard on that. Girls would be turned into ten year top of Harrison. And that's a pretty bad intersection there, so we might talk about, you know, because I wouldn't mind that.
No, no, and E six three, that's pretty much, that's those are the subsidences. Should be nice to see something done on those, yeah. Those are sending everyone pretty quick.
Okay, other questions for Mr. Medina? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Give it time.
Yeah. Okay, let's backtrack to city administrator.
Great, well, thank you. I want to say, first of all, thank you regarding the consent agenda. Uh, as you see, we are trying different practices to keep our meetings timely and efficient, so I appreciate everyone uh, you know, reading and getting your questions in advance. I think that will really help. I think what we will end up doing is looking at more things we can put on the consent agenda for this. We have some, uh, we have a lot of things coming up that we're gonna need to have you all consider. Uh, I wanted to say it it was a a Saturday well to start a day today. If you all got a chance to go by the uh Tabor Opera House to say goodbye to her and well wishes, she has been phenomenal. Uh, you know, to the city in particular, uh, through its years of of transitioning to a city administrator and also just a huge, huge proponent of the Tabor Opera House, so just wanted to publicly thank her again and wish her well. Also wanted to say, uh, I hate saying goodbyes to good people who do good work, uh, but we will certainly also commence with working with Christie Galarza. Uh, when I first came here, she sat me down and said, this is what policy advice her team has been working on for many, many years, and they said, we'll we're gonna push these across the finish line. So then, uh, I said, Shady, yeah, when he got hired, I said, let's push these across the finish line with the closer day. Uh, so this is, it's it's really keeps the community and I I I'm glad to miss her. She's been a great partner to work with. Uh, last Tuesday, we had a community center meeting, which was uh very, very well attended. Lots of folks from different um parts of our community were in attendance and it was also not only uh listening, learning about the community center and where we are in our progress, but uh also getting really active uh communication regarding what people's vision is for the building. Uh, we had a tour of the building, which, you know, I've been in there a number of times, but I think a number of people had never been in. And I think their reaction was kind of surprising. The community sound on the inside is still a little rough, I'm not gonna lie. But I think some people were surprised about how big it was and how much space there was. And I think there was some good visioning about things that could be in there. One of the things that came out of the uh that meeting was subcommittees were created. So if you have an interest in um serving on the fundraising uh subcommittee or the construction subcommittee or the visioning subcommittee, uh, let me or Lauren Barrett know because that's where I think a lot of some of the legwork is gonna get done on a lot of things we need to do. So as part of the phasing of the project, you know, the the public input product part is still going on. And that Lauren's doing, been doing a fantastic job, and I think she's interviewed probably now a hundred people. And then, of course, the meeting last Tuesday was our first public uh input meeting, but there will be more of that, but we're also phasing into the repair version. Uh, where we're looking at things that need repair regardless of what the building turns into. Uh, so the good news is we have a quote on roof repair for three thousand dollars instead of the two hundred thousand dollars we were bracing for. Uh, so that is great news. We're gonna um we're gonna proceed with that because uh the roof is leaking and it is uh the long and short of this, snow piles up, there's ducks on the roof, they're not actually ducks, but like black ducks, ducks. They're supposed to take the water in and carry the water through the pipes and drain it away from the building. Well, those ducks got frozen and um also didn't permit the water to come through and then the pipes broke, so we we can definitely do a lot, so three thousand dollars is a nice surprise. Regarding the dark sky, uh efforts the city is undergoing, I just want to let you all know, we do have from our city attorney. And that has been in my inbox file. Fan with deal with it. So I have put Sarah Bushman, uh, our new administrative assistant in charge of really developing the max, put together the staff report and what information we need to bring that before you all. And my hope is to bring that to you probably early August. She's also working on the basic back fee and the ordinance that we need to uh pass in order to the city to receive that that fee, which we would like to pass along to C four. So those have been projects that I just haven't had the time to get to, so Sarah has uh agreed to take those on and I'm gonna shepherd her through the process of learning how we do ordinance, learning what information we need, first reading, second reading, staff, fourth, so. You will see uh the dark sky witness, which is one step towards becoming uh certified dark skyping. Uh, so not to steal our finding director's number, just a couple of things I wanted to highlight on our uh sort of where we are budget wise and sales tax wise. So thirty-three percent of the year has elapsed, so it's a good point in time to kind of see. We have enough data, you know, third of the year to see kind of where we're headed. The good news is uh we are at basically thirty-nine point one percent uh of our budget if you look at all the departments together. So that's great news, uh, just slightly under budget. Some budgets, some some departments lower, some are a little under, you can see why some uh departments need to spend money at the beginning of the year and there's conferences that they may go to, so uh we as a city are, and that's fantastic news. I always like to bring you good news. And then sales is, uh, I wish Councilmember Hill was here because he and I probably worry about that. I think maybe he worries a little bit more, but we are one point three percent above our budget, which is uh I I I can put back, but I I think it's just slightly uh less than we had last year, but it is one point three percent above our budget. So the good news is we're on track with our budget and the sales tax is a little bit above. All right, so I I start with the good news and then I have a little bit of bad news. What has been our enemy? Uh, the city has really taken a couple of hits with some of our older buildings. I talked to you all about Tabor Home and the water boiler, water damage, shower, all those things that are out of the coastal water issues there, um. You know, Mr. Medina and his team are not really just the streets department, they are a couple of so they are the people who are going over to that home and checking on it for maybe repairs and letting the contractors in and inspecting the work and doing all that, so. Tabor Home has water issues now, AMX spruce has leaking pipes, which has been really unfortunate. So there are two rooms that are not usable right now because of water damage that K W is working to repair. Uh, I don't know that we're out of the woods on that. Uh, as of this morning, there were additional leaks, so older homes, uh, you know, I'm not, I'm not really sure. It's not, I don't think connected to the washer dryer that we were trying to replace there. I'm not really sure what the issue is. But water has definitely been our enemy over the last four months. I was like to tell you if you're gonna see bigger bills. We have made, um, if if it's justified, we do make a claim to our insurance company, and so the damage has been significant enough that we put a claim in with the Tabor Home. Uh, just to give you a preview, a couple of things coming up on your agendas for the next few meetings. Uh, we are going to be be presenting you with more I TAs, intergovernmental agreements to review. We have one for from the Inter Mountain uh transportation, what is PR saying?
Planning region.
Planning region. Uh, and and that's just essentially our C dot transportation region, and so we're we'll have that for you to take a look at. It's not really significant, but we'll also have we need to start getting ready for elections, so the county clerk will run the election for us again. We would need to have an I T A for that, so uh lots of other items coming up on the agendas, but we, um, I will continue to try and find ways to make the meetings because there's there's just so many things I think we need to get through the city council. Um, last thing, I would like to end on something kind of interesting and fun. Uh, so Mr. Presnov found this wonderful book uh from Regis College and it talks about all the fragments from Regis and it was really interesting because we have so many famous people and let them look at Regis, uh, Howard Tritz, I didn't know that. Uh, we, uh, let's see, who's the other one was, um.
The Keigho family.
The Keigho family. Um, John Judnic and Neil Reynolds. Also, and I think this is actually the reason why I was impressed with actually giving this book, because there's this other page where my is one of the fragments from Regis College, so anyway, just a little bit of history, um, some levels, kind of a nice walk through the past to see how many uh how many of our folks who were, you know, maybe born and raised and came up through Colorado.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Questions for our city administrator?
Gloria, are any of those costs with eight or nine spruce, have they hit books yet? Like, have we have seen them on this? So when we look at those, that budgeted doesn't happen.
It'll just be like, but wait, there's more.
No, and and the insurance covers it, we've not sure, I have to double check if we have stuff with deductibles, but uh, you know, I I think if the insurance covers it, then it would just be, it would just be the deduct. We have paid at least one deductible, but I'm not sure if there yeah, different ones were like actual property damage and other types of claims. But if, you know, generally water, if it's uh how does it work? If it comes from outside, it's. Yeah, so we'll we'll definitely have to, uh, we we definitely made claims. Uh, I will review as soon as we know how that's panning out.
Was K W U for the repairs for presence of the insurance?
Uh, let's see. What, oh, like is it referral from insurance company? No.
They just, it tends to be very expensive.
Yeah, yeah.
So if we add options on that, then we'd be able to stay.
Okay, yeah, I'll talk to you about that because I I definitely, we we don't wanna.
We don't want to shorten any, you know, obvious ways to save money and that might be something.
I also have a money saving question regarding the different bids for the roof work on the community center. Is there any sense for why there's like, that's a pretty dramatic difference in cost?
Correct.
Is it, but was the original the very high one for replacing the roof?
Um, we, so so backing up, we don't, uh, there were no bids. This was when we had um the folks come in and look and walk through, as you know, Lawrence had a number of, Ms. Barrett, it's a number of folks coming through. You know, the initial what thought was, okay, it needs to be a really complete replacement, so that would have been two hundred thousand. Which was and but until we got someone up there and who walked it and said, no, it can be repaired, which is three thousand. And then under our purchasing policy, we don't have to put out a bid for under, uh, well, so I'll just put it this way, under five thousand dollars in small purchase, we don't need to do this. Which makes things, I mean, the reason for that is it makes things more efficient for smaller.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Has anybody had to move out of eight or nine spruce with two unusable rooms?
No, it's had to move. People have had to move rooms within the.
So we had four? We had four people living there then?
Uh, well, I don't actually think one of the newer people has moved in yet because.
So where you guys from?
So actually, I think we have I need to, I need to double check. I think we, I'm sure two, but.
The two on there.
Mm-hmm, and, uh.
But potentially going to be two.
Potentially, because I'm pretty sure I don't, I want to be sensitive to who's there, so I always ask if I can mention who's there. Um, one of the folks I think is uh I thought was in, but may not be. And then, of course, we're looking at renting out the which is not water damaged basement unit, so we kind of have a critical need for ASAP next week.
And I think someone destined for their found alternative housing. Maybe.
For the short.
Yeah. I'll see if that'll work out.
Am I remembering?
Yeah, well, so we were, we were, uh, I, uh, so Tim and Bill said Andy Tate was telling us there were two like critical service worker folks who were coming. Yeah, bus driver and a post worker, and uh I think what the so it's I think it's eagle transportation, they wanted to do a mass release and we had done that, yeah. So I know that. I'm not sure about. But we definitely, I think there wasn't water damage, we would have been asking the end last week. Uh, because we asked.
And one more stupid question, what is maximum occupancy there, including the basement unit? Would it be six units or?
Five.
Five.
Yeah, we not, yeah, we used the basement because it had so much furniture in it and the other rooms were uh literally, literally like pillowcases and sheets and then all the pillows, you know, from being bed breathers. The downstairs was uh bunk beds and that wasn't really functional for the uses, although I guess we have potential uses for the bunk beds. I was, the faster they can come out, the faster we can get. Oh, that's. Yeah, because we can, we can use that basement unit. Yeah, yeah.
Other questions for city administrator?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, it's just so awesome. So win-win. All right, so I don't feel like I'm being terribly tidy with our department. Tidy with our department force, but that's okay. Let's roll. Is there anybody here from police or are you summarizing that?
Uh, I can summarize that. The, uh, the great news is we're making progress. We have staff meeting. Last week, we're gonna talk to the staff about where we are, bringing up our. Uh, our human resources director has actually made a number of priories. So, uh, Officer White. Uh, you know, he's come in and hit the ground running and, uh, we're super excited to have him on board. He's got a great attitude. Right now, he's, uh, flying with, uh, Officer Hanson during the day and we have one other certified. Person that, uh, was looking at us and we're looking at them. And then. Uh, two applicants who are not homeless certified, but acting chief Ryer has put in for. Two, um, uh, post academy spot, grant money for two spots. And we actually have one reserved for. City County Hamill's Ranch, hoping that pans out. And then we have another person who's willing to come back with the police department in person. Uh, but they just need to, uh, recover from an injury. And once they are medically cleared to come back. Uh, we will be able to bring that, hopefully bring that person on board. But it's, it's such a long process. There's so many steps. It, I know the department is a little like, why does it take so long? Well, you know, normal hiring is. Putting it out there, getting the resumes, doing some interviews, background checking. Officers should have so much more because we do a written test and a oral test. A more extensive background medical insight. So any one of those things can get delayed. But there's great news on that and, um, I just approved the posting for. His chief and our peers are, are, and they're optimistic. They felt like for what our package went, they could definitely get us good candidates.
Questions regarding the police department?
On top of the police report. To our particular issue last month, Chief Ryer mentioned that he was going to do some additional training with CSOs. Is that in the board yet?
Yeah, in fact, uh, what the, the, the meeting talked about really that, you know, the, the snow is melting. Slowly, uh, they, they, they really, they've been in the long mornings. And so the point now is the snow has melted and people can move their cars. It's time to now get the tickets instead of the orders. And so they appreciate that.
Well, I'll also add in, they are, uh, shifting these schedules that there will be seven day coverage now. These are.
Do we still have those CSO like?
Uh.
I think, I think like they.
I, no, I think they're both.
They are specifically stated that they're like moving and getting out of the station. Maybe another reason why we're not seeing any of their. This year.
Well, I, I.
They have so many lines of complaints.
Yep.
Helping out Chief.
Yeah.
Is there going to be additional training on that?
Uh. Meeting the CSOs every two weeks on Thursday. Uh, the last meeting, CSOs communicated they were looking to actually train on this place. So it went on. When, when the, uh, assignment replacement in the store district is being done at that front. So the ball's on my court to come up with some training on that. Um, that, that was the training they just simply requested that I think Earl said it, um, Chief Ryer was right to me. Um, that was, that was the training that was requested.
Are you seeing some improvement in, uh, warnings and citations for zoning complaints?
Yes, it, the, the last meetings that we had, the last meeting we had emphasizing the importance of follow-up. Um, I don't really need the official ball, so any violations, I can place verbal after that. And people can call me, proprietors can call me and say, hey, what is this violation for? Yeah, I can set you up with all that. But I can be the person that ten days later is, is saying, oh, ten days passed, I mean, all, so I, I've been reiterating that's the help I need. But we are, we are seeing more citations. I think there were since, uh, in the past months, since your last meeting, there have been six courtesy warnings that have been issued. By CSOs. So yeah, so I think it's improving. This is a process that didn't exist six months ago, but it exists now. There's been some tweaks, but it's, it is improving.
And the supervisor remains for the CSO?
Yes, Mrs. Lawrence, yeah, she's a fish.
Other questions regarding police, I think.
I was gonna ask my partner to get saved. Thank you, Julie.
Alright. I, I still have, the charts are really hard to read.
Okay. I did bring that in the CSO browser and, uh, I, I, I will ask again, uh, to actually work on that for us.
Thank you. It looks like one of them says that they spent four days at boot days in April.
Just because the colors are not very.
Yes, yes.
Um, I. I do have a suggestion about that. Maybe have her not include the months that aren't relevant, so the size of the months that are relevant both.
Yeah. That's a good idea. Alright, other comments? Okay, fire, thank you. Fire department?
Yeah, buddy. I'll try to make this free, um, but I do have some information to give you tonight because next month I'll speak on Andrew Ford. Uh, moving on, we're in vacation and. That's what we need to pay in the report. If you'd like a presentation in the report, give it to me to just go over the statistics please on that. Uh, I want to thank Julie Mark, the ambulance, you reached out to us for some retake money. And, uh, nobody used the four thousand dollars this year, so we put in for four dry suits, eight rope bags and ice picks. Uh, and we're replacing equipment that's two thousand five with that. Okay, so that's one, uh, to be able to reach out. Normally what we do is we use that. On annually, which we did again this year for, uh, one that was one hundred eighty dollars. That's to prevent child trauma. Senior technicians to give new families, getting them in an age group. Our seat we have installed after prevention of trauma. So, uh, that's one of the funny coming our way. Uh, so bad news is, is that the peers, uh, twenty sixteen peers that's been kind of minor over the years. Thankfully it's going into a secondary status, so it won't be used as much anymore. Um, they have repairs down at Front Range, I mean, a range of about nineteen thousand dollars. Uh, to get it fully operational and mission ready. Hopefully we won't have to have those containers repaired because of how it's sitting in that second do. It'll be ready for response. The type of engine went on deployment yesterday, went to Fort Stockton, which is in northwest Texas. It's a little town. I'm standing right now for you. What's it? Yeah. So, uh, they'll be out there and we've already been asked to extend it. It does go back fifteen days and more. Chase. Down station two, a sheriff's deputy moved out. Moving has been to, uh, one sheriff deputy, then he found housing, and then the sheriff's deputy down there, and then they went back. So that we got two rooms available for, uh, the ambulance. We work with, we're just allowed to. Check out some first response when they're able to come to that station, um, from May to, I believe, August. Said, bring it out, kind of repeat what a little bit, um, or ambulance response this summer. And we'll see how it goes. Operationally, uh, moving forward. Um, we had a while in our, this weekend. And you may have seen some smoke. And, um, it was a good success. I really love this training annually because now we can figure out. All of the things that we need to get better on, but we also figure out the things that aren't always well, we, we have to fix. Of course, and again, like six, we found out a new Texas. She, uh, had relay that went out. And there may be some fire situation with the pump operation. So now we've got that. It wasn't even served yet, but we utilized it during this training. So we're gonna figure out. And this, you know, either get it in the shop. So, uh, let's see, one of the, one of the good things that I love about Chief Oil and all the efforts that he does is that. Um, since the program has started with installing smoke detectors, we put in over eight hundred smoke detectors in our, in our community. And, you know, for every smoke detector that puts, you know, that gets put in a home saves lives. So think about. It's for early detection to get out during, during. And that's just one program that he does. He worked with the American Cross and all the division part, actually control, you know, you see. Uh, with their community risk reduction division to be able to put, uh, additional smoke detectors this year. Rather than a thousand dollars to get CO detectors to put those in the homes as well because of the sound, so. Uh, wonderful efforts and not only that, he found extinguishers like thirty years ago. It's from technology nineteen seventy-nine. And so he's up really on top of it. And also the safety checks he does. For, um, he's done over a hundred fifty homes and that also those residents are getting work. Extinguishers. So I just wanted to mention that because I just think that it's just a wonderful effort that we do for, uh, prevention efforts. Uh, for life safety purposes and for our community. I absolutely love it. I love it. Um, so, uh, let's see. And then. Mayor, Mayor, I just want to thank you just for a quick note on your, uh, delivery of your message in the newsletter about. While Lance is coming upon.
That's kind of a nice synchronicity, wasn't it? I did not speak with you prior to.
Yeah. It's great. And then it had the three PR codes for planning and preparation. Uh, so that, that's a bunch of messages you sent out there. And, um, one last thing, uh, we just received twenty eight thousand eight oh two seventy-one back from the Saper grant and then. I'll be working with finance, uh, to be able to give the, uh, next reimbursement for year twenty twenty-three. So. Other than that, I think that, uh, I don't know. Just get any questions?
Any questions for Chief Daley?
Just curious to you, you guys are doing a phenomenal job on social media. Just as you do, you do, you do a really nice job. Wish other people will follow that thing.
Yeah, yeah, I'll pass on it to you.
So you see, you're doing great.
That person's wife who looks to usually boss, that's one of the one right now. It's, it's his wife.
Yeah. It makes all the different people.
Yeah, true.
Yeah, I have all.
Oh, ten dollars, yeah. Everything's in the news, but. I will, I will give more information on that as.
Okay. Other questions for Chief Daley? Thank you very much. Uh, H R, what highlights would you like to? I mean, you're, you've been so busy.
I've been very busy and it's kind of, uh, I don't feel like I have much to say because each department has been excited to announce their new addition. Um, but I've been working hard. Achievers has been really helpful, actually trying to get, uh. There's not a specific onboarding process procedure that existed before. And so just getting something streamlined, um. To have, you know, the person's first day be, we are ready to go. They hit the ground running, um. All the allies, what is that? My first day was today. Um, we have our progress that's been made. And so that's been a lot of, um, I mean, recruiting, uh, police recruiting, as Lori mentioned, is a lot more. Later intensive as far as all the steps and checks that we are doing. So we do have one post certified. Uh, applicant in the pipeline. Did the background check phase. So now we have, um, some follow-up stuff and I will check in references and they start scheduling, um. Evaluations and exams and stuff. Um. Otherwise, uh, police chief recruitment and everybody that's done it in, um, your packets. Um, just trying to follow along. They did give out a draft that we edited and sent back to them, but the folks in the line here hopefully very, very soon and not too soon. Um, and it's a beautiful brochure. So once it is published, I'm going to make sure to share that. Um, and hopefully, um, that will be taking up a lot of time here in the short. Probably as well. Otherwise, uh, I'm a little so much questions for.
Any questions for the team?
I was gonna say, I, I, but one of the nice things about, uh, streaming and forwarding. Is, uh, our I T person, I T Dan. Has, uh, offered, it, it made, it was created a. Software where, you know, we actually do a little checklist and, uh, it, he walked us through it. Actually pretty impressive so that we can really check all the boxes for every single person that comes on board. And, uh, it set, it actually sets up, it sends the request back to Dan so he can send whatever it was to be sent. They said, so, you know, what is, do they need email? Do they need this? Do they need a phone? And so. Uh, I'm hoping that a lot of these things will make things easier and also more efficient. So we'll know. You know, where the phone is and where the passport is and things like.
Yeah, it's, I've been, I've really been trying to highlight, um. Our benefits, my knowledge of benefits, I've been talking to our vendors, uh, I have. A representative from Pepper Jones coming here in a couple of weeks to do a presentation. She will be here for overnight today to do one-on-ones with our employees. Um, trying to encourage the retirement option more. Um, surprisingly, there is about six people on our retirement. So, um, we have a representative coming, um, she's going to give a great presentation about knowledge, our plan, what we offer and do one-on-ones. Same with any other benefit I noticed that we offer, but is not really being used, um, like the employee assistance program. We have a very robust employee assistance program that, um, doesn't seem to be very well known about, nor used. Um, I wouldn't know because anybody that uses it, they are not allowed to speak to us, but no one has, like, so really asked me about it. So. Trying to push just this information, things that we offer and kind of revamp the presentation of the. You know, open enrollment will be a lot more planned out and every presentation, all these things. And you're gonna get people to just participate more on both. So. Working on.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you very much. Okay, I don't, are you gonna cover animal shelter briefly or?
I have not many questions. Our, uh, animal shelter manager is, you know, personal matter, uh, so family matters. So I'm happy to pass on any information. Our questions, but, um, we, you know, we continue to go through phases of being overly prominent and I, they're doing a fantastic job with adoptions and, uh. We are still trying to get our, um. Office manager through her. And patrol training, which is, she's been out ill and we needed her in the shelter. Wants to have breasts quickly as we would like. But I reassured her that that is our intention. She is reassuring me, it's her intention, so. Just matter of getting her in to do the training.
Do you know how much more she has to complete that? I know that's. You're not asking the right person.
I think, uh, animal shelter manager wants her to go through a. Or sophisticated model, not module. So at least, um, one of the models. And I think there are three or four.
I have offered to help facilitate scheduling and. Creating a plan to have a kind of more of a. Go live, uh, anticipation date. So, uh, I've emailed them both and we've kind of sit down, uh, they're supposed to be weather and prices. Dates, so we can kind of just get a plan set and have an anticipation time of when that may affect the situation.
Thank you. Okay, um. Other questions on the animal shelter directed to people who are not from the animal shelter? Okay, uh, similarly, we have the deputy city clerk's report. Um, she is unfortunately out ill. Um. So if there's any questions on, on her brief licenses report, um. Our city administrator can pass them on. Yes.
Um, as far as the S T R license goes, um, did any attrition and were any from the waiting list awarded? I'm curious how that. In the, of the new, the new, uh.
Well, our last. Well, wait until our questions are perfect. I think she may ask for that in the future parts.
Okay.
Um, because last count I saw. Um because last count I saw. Under the new limit, but I'm not sure if I saw it. Let's do it. We uh one of the questions that just came up was as far as four term rental license. Do you remember what the final count was by the death of mine? I think it was. About nine. I want to say around one fifty. That was mine. I didn't want. I think that's I think that's. So.
So that would mean there are still licenses available.
Mm hmm. And, you know. There was some trickle in. And there has been some trickle in in May, so I'm not sure where we're.
Sure.
Because they they had to tell. April. And we it it creates less heading for us if we say, look, you didn't renew by April thirtieth. And uh because sometimes there's, you know, male, woman, the bike, who knows? But it it creates a little less work for us to say, we can have a vulnerable case. And we might get a few in because of that, but it looks based upon those challenges, but there might be available to come off the weightless, which is kind of frustrating. Uh but yeah, it's case of like. You know, one fifty one or even one fifty seven. Um one fifty six.
And our new license struggle was one sixty seven. Are you good? We're good if there's something I can tell you?
I think it was twelve.
So yes, thank you.
Okay, other questions is questions is questions regarding the licenses.
Hannah has been a lot.
I.
Um you you.
Okay. I'm going to lump building department and planning department together. Okay, Taven.
So I am absolutely thrilled to. To us. So I just want to welcome Alex. Alex provides some much needed capacity to her department. Uh so for real, like we introduced us on, and so we know. Awesome. I am Alex Willis. I was born and raised in Leadville. I was actually born in town and there was still a beauty department. And I graduated Lake County High School in two thousand and six. And then I moved on to the University of New Mexico to get a degree in architecture. And it was Leadville and its awesome old buildings and its wild history got me interested in architecture. And I didn't have the language or expanding. Situation. You know, so this job was kind of way out of the blue, which shaped in. Six, eight weeks ago, about a personal project. Then discovered some positions on my confidence. Well, it works in good way. Because I will be working for time and experience and transition at the time it's tender. Should I talk about? So I am very passionate to help help the blood water received from Javen. And I am very passionate of this community um. It existed in the city before, right? So I heard so. It's it's wild to me, a full circle kind of way. Looking for the job. It's been a lot. I committed and accepted two.
Thank you. And stepping into the city fire role and then top top experience with architecture is going to be so guide. We just would do certain renovation commission projects, such as appropriate that will be a lot of volume that will come in front of you now. So the instrumental helping. Guide you to, you know, that decision, that decision making. Uh I'm in terms of schedule. So you probably will still see me at these at these meetings. Um I'm trying to not work thirteen hour days anymore back to back to back. Um and so we're going to be, this will allow, what I do, this will allow us to um to have some office coverage. Um so I'll still continue to be interested in what I was present here in meeting meetings, but um Alex will give a lot of that back house or to to new projects in front of you. Um so just welcome and we're sober. Thanks. I'll give a few more updates. Um and that's you're welcome. Thanks. More of it. That's about seven seven key updates um to to let you know uh page one thirty five of your packet. Um. We have a freight box car C U P that will be coming in front of you. So that's now an active application. And in terms of. Really, we are. Uh we have a deadline coming up this Friday or Saturday, where the twenty fifth, yeah, where we will, we will not be issuing building permits or certificates of occupancy, etc. Um if we don't receive what we've been requesting, there's fourteen remaining items over the next four days. Um I'll be working on, as the city minister pointed out, um and and ordinance uh come to you later this year as regarding items coming to you, more items coming to you on the consent agenda versus public hearings. Uh I sent you a memo from the city attorney's office. Uh there was a state's uh law that has been passed House Law one thousand and seven of this year. Um that will really make us, it will require us to clean up um. One component of our family definition makes our our family definition more permissive. We're already already okay. Um. Um it could it could be all, but we have, there's an exemption that we need to clean up. So that will be coming in front of you. You receive a memo directly from me and the city attorney about that. The Silver King um application to rezone that in the county that's adjacent to city level limits. Um I attended that public hearing, the preliminary hearing at um the the county um planning zoning planning commission. And that application was continued due to the um the um some more. Terms and conditions that need to be worked out related to the the definition of their. And see that they're proposing. Uh we, so today we held our F P um response meeting for the um three developers who are. Um and responded to the R F P for the two Lake County Regional Housing Authority sites that will be building up to twenty eight, thirty townhome units, duplex units, etc. Um that will be given in those three finalists, includes fading west um modular. The factory builders down value from us. That will be going to B O C C on May thirty first. Those are um my updates. I just want to thank our all city hall office staff. Um who have shut the offices over the past few weeks to kind of accommodate some staffing changes. Um that has gone better than expected um from my perspective. Um and I just want to thank all of our city hall staff. So if you're coming to city hall, try to find staff upstairs. There's been some shifting. I'm sure you're fine with this. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, regarding the silver king zoning. Could you uh can you let us know what your? Uh point of view in the letter that you submitted to the county planning was?
Yes. So when originally came to us, there was, there was not any kind of uh definition for. Um the multifamily housing use allowance that was proposed in the P U D. So this technically three applications. So regarding the custom zoning, they're proposing the P U D, planning and development. Um they had a line on for multi fam- multifamily housing. Uh so my my comments P and Z support is that needs to be defined. What what does that mean? Have a definition for that. Can can staff thought on that really quickly and there was some back and forth. So by the time next student in front of the hearing, there had already been some, there was additional proposals uh by the applicant. And and basically the uh way the planning permission said. You know, this this looks better than it extended. We sat probably recently saw important and that the applicant committed to do that. So they're coming back. Um and this gets into some 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 details that I probably won't have a visual to explain, but it comes back to it. Um you know, one employer within the county um proposing. To have a uh a five, I think it's a five year um lease, master lease for the property. And then and then after, so after five years, a lot of especially what happens after that five years ends. Um you know, these are small, most, you know, hotel rooms, hotel rooms. And so um A M R restrictions honestly probably don't make sense considering how small these units are. There's a, there was a lot of discussion about what if, you know, in lieu of A M R restrictions, what those restrictions should be, especially after that five year master lease ends.
But the um. The zoning was specifically so climax, let's just take that out of. Um can hold those apartments or whatever they want to call them for their own employees. And so none of the conversation was related specifically to that yet. That the use, the proposed use of the.
The intention is for the first one.
Yes, I'm aware. I'm just wondering if that was part of the discussion that pushed the uh. The permit down the road.
Sorry, just just not understanding the question. Um. Sorry.
Okay, so because we're talking about two different entities. We're talking about the company that bought.
Blue Arrow.
Blue Arrow Plaza. And they want to lease it to climax or there is to. To as climax builds their staff. Um to hold those. Units for their employees. And I'm just wondering um if your letter addressed that. That's been addressed.
No.
On top of just the uh appropriateness of the definitions of affordable housing in the zoning.
No, the the that that letter was, we had the response request deadline for the public hearing. And so. Uh I took that point in the zoning commission, the next day issued that letter, which is the debt to to issue that letter to the county. And then it was, it was after that that the the applicant, this county staff communicated the concern over same comment that we addressed. Then the applicant came back after we issued the letter, proposed the additional term of five minutes release and then and then addition of. Phase in or phase out. And then so that's our letter did not address that.
Good.
And so it it basically communicated uh that I was at the public hearing, I communicated, we had provided the letter, but our letter didn't address that because it was revised. Their proposal was relaxed.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you very much. Oh, did you?
Yeah, I'll call it a few later.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to finance.
Name? I don't have anything left to review.
Any questions for finance in this one?
Um so electronic pay stubs are live. You all should have received an email communication as well. Um it's not just in for Lori, it's for council members. So. Um if you haven't had a chance, they are live giving me help, making. Left myself a page can help as well. Um. The May thirty first will be the last payroll that we print pay stubs. So we're going to try and move away from paper um as much as possible. They will be available on requests. We'll plug them with everybody. Um but they don't have the means to to do their. Ways. Um as Jay mentioned, if you're looking for me, I am in or in my MS. Of the office. Um so it's definitely on my knee. Um. Let's see here. Lori. Lori. We want to channel each other. Um so during uh the one this week, when or last week, two weeks ago, I don't know. Um I don't know what it is anymore. Uh Miss Amos and I talked about funding um four hundred thousand dollars. With power of trust, additional four hundred thousand um in the budget account. So I mentioned to. Bro, the power of trust and help get us set up um so we can get some, make some money. Um I did check. The dollars today and we're at twenty four thousand, oh twenty five thousand. Uh for twenty four, five, twenty four thousand. Um since we began this in the end of. Eight uh to Washington. And then this one about the person. Million banks. I mean, take a lot of. Uh so we want to maximize. Already done on that. We'll see what else. Four hundred and four. Facilitation that we're going to do that and. Yes, so uh. Cassel has uh from her name, well, I I did this, said that to everybody, uh but they will help me catch up on items. Um so I mentioned about counting them regarding um to get a proposal. For help of a bank for facilitation since they hadn't been done since, I think, April. I did May, June, July. Uh and was working on August. Um so we partner Mike Cassell to try to get those caught up because audits are approaching and I did not have. Um the capacity to work on this um with with that, the also on trees. Um so we began. This week, um Charlie CPA with. Self uh is working on those um and do not really. Mount.
It was a little high. You know, I think you know that we 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 definitely had um a little, a little gap in finance. You know, uh former finance director was helping out for the interim and we had kind of cross training someone. To help with payroll, but she wasn't able to use all the finance tasks. So the bank reconciliation fell behind. And so. Um if you inherited a department with banking, bank reconciliation is behind. We need to get caught up for our. I don't want to have it. And then she lived that on audit. So. Uh Cassell, that's what they're doing now. I think it's seven thousand dollars, which is a.
Limiting investment.
Which is unfortunate, but I'd rather have that than I'd rather clean on it, at least on that point. So, you know, I think it's just sometimes the. Um let's say the cost of doing business, but it was sort of the cost of us not uh. As you all know, I think from the beginning, we had a, I think, almost fatal uh. Situation in in not having cross trained anybody to do any of the financial tasks. And that was just the the nature of where it was. You know, my parent, it was Ms. Thai and Ms. Schneider and the mayor. And, you know, so I think having some cross training on finance and obviously we can have some. Able to do that, but we have to get a cop. Uh so we're definitely be working on the cross training aspect. So it doesn't happen again, but we need to.
And we can continue with the cross training. Uh Paige and I are tech team payroll so that um. If something arises, I was out on vacation last week. She was able to process. Um but if some somebody goes to you now, we have that continuation of operations. Um I'm training Sarah. Now on accounts table. Um so we'll just continue to to cross train between um our departments. Um so we make sure that they'll get data and we will get data.
Thank you. I love that. Um. Yeah.
Let's see. So we're gonna, we're gonna take the combinations tax. So the estimate um. During the end of April with payments that come in uh was. Tax combinations tax of ninety three thousand uh three ninety nine. Uh that's roughly twenty twenty thirty percent and this is three. Um as I mentioned, we had the uh one fifty eight through the end of April. Um I did, it wasn't the big account today and they have some some other payments tricked in. Um did, or I've seen them maybe when we back up. I was on Muni Rose and I've seen payments tricked in there. I think when you hit the banks, I think. Still, um so I'm working on, I got everything posted. Um that is the bank, that's. Need to finalize that um and then get a check. The auditor is scheduled to be here in the lead of June seventeenth. I have an email um to ask if we can push that to drop to July. She did offer that. We were sexually um just with things that I am finding um as well as. The CPA working on the big reconciliations. There's been some uh deposits that. Have hit the bank or posted in itself. Um so we're kind of tech teams. So I can try and get those, look for those research um and get those posted in the system. I think that is about it. I did have a question um from last meeting about the. What do you think? Um. I think with the. We may have had an extra holiday on that thing or when to look at the holiday dates. So it did include the January. The first payroll in January included Christmas and New Year. So I think that. Is part of the job. Um and then um any payroll pieces that. And whether are the color pieces um in American pieces. Um I'm not sure. And whether are the quality increases, um the American reasons, um I'm not sure. Um and then looking at year-to-date. Our total budget was six thousand and we're at fifty more, so we know we're gonna be over budget in general because um we've adopted. The fourteen fifteen, fifteen holiday pay holiday, um so we'll be looking at budget a little more quickly. Um salaries or personal home expenditures, Paige and I will work on together um to make sure that we have a very.
Questions. Crystal, can you talk a little bit more about Muni Muni Res and is it going to be able to answer the outstanding questions we have about short-term rentals? And is that done through cell phone tracking or do we even know yet?
Do not know, um either there was a meeting scheduled and I. So we had a meeting with our representative and she pulled in uh to to track people. And uh it sounds to me like they're trying to work with some different platforms altogether under the. And so we were saying, look, your website says you can do this, they're like. Wonder if that was the historic product and we'll look at that and so. Um two things, one, we're gonna give them an opportunity to get back to us, they can do that, I did say. A vendor email when I got different company that says they can do it. So I might just say at some point, no, maybe we need to reevaluate uh whether Google OS and its. Muni Res and lodging res are, you know, part of all part of Google OS and that really is the best platform for us and. We had thought about that and we met internally staff, it was a while back, I think before this year it was on board. To talk about that and we said, well, we're in the middle of renewals, it's probably best not to switch platforms right now. But it is something we wanted to keep on, so the answer is we've asked and they are researching if they can actually do that for us.
Okay, I guess the only thing I have to add to that is I would encourage us to talk to other entities within our community like EDC, like Main Street. Like tourism, because I think a lot of people, a lot of organizations could benefit from that kind of information. And it might be nice if we could all share and collaborate and have pay for one plan.
Yeah, yeah, we ended up having to go with a different, yeah, different stuff.
I have reached out to, especially around the community, um to see what. Use and a lot of them do reuse. If not all of them that I reach out to, they do use Muni Res, um but.
Okay, that's good to know, thank you.
And I found one. The really researched, you know, any of.
I'm looking at your um. Ugraph on page one sixty-nine, I'm just uh I don't know if I missed something last month, but so there was no. Lodging tax revenue in March and was that the collections issue that had been raised? For the accommodations tax, yeah.
Well, they are supposed to split what they're doing and they're due by the um well, there's this contradictory. So we're, those are the, you're gonna see, you should see that there's a portion in. In January.
So so that then explains why there's the the twenty-six percent increase over twenty twenty-three and.
Um that I am not sure. People are raising more, they raised the rates um into a lot of harm.
Or if people are getting more attuned to reporting and what they're. And maybe some of all of the above, but I think based on Elsa's phone calls. A lot of people were just a little bit oblivious to it and I think fewer people can. Either be or claim ignorance at this point.
And and we do have. Reminders, you know, they they miss. Count them immediately.
That goes to anybody who has the.
Yeah, actually, I mean, to claim obliviousness means that either you have this. Stop me using the email address completely because I have one gentleman who. He actually stopped his short-term rental license, but for whatever reason, he keeps getting the reminders through Muni Res and. You know, he sends it to you, give the date, you know, what it needs to be done and the date, how many days it has to do and. He's like, I'm here to be pressed, so I really do think Muni Res, if you access that email address. You you are being aligned very consistently.
Yeah, and and I. Their their payments return for whatever the bank account information was, right? So I had to work and to try to reverse the payment because of the revert reverses on the bank side. And the payment for it all, it doesn't reverse on the Muni Res, it's a whole other tedious process. To go in and redo and reverse a payment so that they can go get it. So I've added myself as an owner so that um that I can see more of what. You know, what they're seeing to reverse payments, that's never going to do it. Um and then left myself on there to pay with names, I can make sure and the email reminders. Keep getting angry. Which required a support ticket and then three weeks before.
Surely.
Well, you know, they can't get support. Um I did want to make the sales tax schedule, I added um another column to the far right. Uh to see the percentage of over hundred from the prior year. Um as well, I thought that would be helpful, um the the budget, we don't actually budget those numbers. It's all a formula, um so you know, they're not hard coded in the system. Um I I thought that percentage might be helpful, um if you'd rather see a four hundred dollar amount or in addition to. Um when you're doing role examples.
I don't know how I feel about this, I feel a little confused, but actually, that's just me.
By the number?
I think just by what it means, how to interpret it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One question or I guess just thing that I had in, I I don't. I think it was the first time that at least I've seen the accommodations tax laid out on the floor. Uh which was one bit. Uh more so in a similar style to the uh the schedule of it uh in a similar self to the same tax.
Yes, I I heard that last time that we were having. Um had had a request um from, I think, a prior meeting uh from.
I appreciate it and I think it will let us, you know, come better and introduce us to what it means for tourism and the benefits. Certain events bring to our community and be looking around that August timeline.
Yeah, I think somebody else raised this point, the accommodation stacks can be more against. That underlying reason, we don't know, we'll just see that the money they're up, but it could be one or the other.
It's easier though, because you can just divide it by the number of submissions.
Uh you have to divide it by the number of rooms.
Okay, but you could still get a ballpark idea of what the underlying cause of an increase is.
I don't think you could, because um the the. The rent, the owners have to submit, they submit the money to Muni Res, but they don't. Report how many nights they rented or how many.
Can you make them do that?
Get no money. How they rented, you know.
It's funny you ask, I think um a community recently did pass legislation to require. Uh which community was it, Idaho Springs or no?
I don't remember, but to to file information uh monthly regarding the number of units uh rented and. I can't remember, it was the, that the break as well. Yeah, that I guess is kind of curious without, and I wanted to ask you about having somebody.
Yeah.
And what, is it on the system, do we require Muni Res to submit any likes of?
No, it's totally on our system and and we're not doing any sort of random audits or anything and I. And I do think um, I think that would be pretty bourbonsome on owners, but I would do wonder. I mean, it's one way to maybe get that information, but I also wonder if there's a way. Where to have a permit, you also have to grant the city access to your platform data.
Yeah.
So that you could actually just check the data on it.
Because you would run, personally, you would run a review of like in, you know, over the course of a year, like who paid no tax? But then it was not clear, like, were they even renting? Or did they rent and not pay, like, you know, like, it was just not easy.
Units that report zero all the time, um but they continue to renew their lights. Um so you know, I I we need to understand how.
Yeah, it would be interesting to research how other communities are running some kind of audit.
There um are there platforms like Muni Res that sync with hospitality software? Well, I think that one is supposed to.
Like they would get integrated with Airbnb and VRBO and.
And their stadium reservations.
Well, we should consider, it's like you and I were talking about, if somebody has had their accommodations tax for a year. And it's because they weren't renting, then they shouldn't hold their current license, they need to bail out.
Yeah, I think this is one of the the things that we, you know, we didn't have a plan for who was gonna do this. Follow up on it and so what we did is we said, okay, we passed accommodations tax, we put it on our finance director to handle the money. We we really didn't ever plan for compliance or monitoring or questions. And so that has fallen on the licensing aspect of the city clerk. And uh she has a lot of hats and so oftentimes we end up being a complaint with system. They are in some other aspects and we've definitely followed up on, you know, complaints that something was actually short-term rental when. You know, it it ended up being long-term rental, she's the one who's worked on a lot of client issues, but. You know, in the future, if we did something, I would want a system. These switches to do it. Because it, there were, there were no, there was no budget for additional money anywhere to figure out. Taking tasks.
Crystal, there's that webinar coming up for. The Google OS or whoever Muni Res is becoming, that's supposed to address taxes and licensing. And. I I signed up for that, I don't know why, um but I I feel like, you know, like maybe some of the questions that we're asking might be. Answered there.
So while we can't verify reporting, we can verify a license holder who has. Paid zero taxes in a year, it should be nice to have some type of a fourth day. Policy on renewing a license if the accommodations taxes were paid in the previous year, that would seem to be.
There is, there's a fourteen-day minimum rental.
That's true.
Right, we have to, we have to, we have to mesh those two bits of data, you know, the application, the reapplication versus and the. Haven't paid anything this year. On accommodations tax.
Seems like that would be a relatively easy, easy thing to check in Muni Res when you were renewing a license. To see what accommodations taxes were paid in the previous.
Well, and that's, that's what Crystal had. It just wasn't clear through Muni Res, why, like, did they?
No, and then that puts the burden on the on one to prove that they were writing that the fees were paid.
Okay. On a different topic, I'm really in favor of getting some help with the accommodations, I know that has been looming over you. For a long time and um just, it'll be nice to get that asked.
You're the, we don't. Um I, yeah, I just emphasize, I really appreciate this, the combination stacks and. I know it doesn't necessarily reflect month to month. It's worth paying periods, but um if we do end up with a. In place for that, I would love to see if we could eventually get to a place that's where it is month to month. I know it's. I am at that. What do you mean? I months to month, but that doesn't seem realistic unless we were to have the data that um some member best was speaking about. Uh which is the room, so if we get to that point, I would love to see it reflect that way, but obviously that's.
You've done an excellent job and spent a lot of our saving cotton.
The murky water is clearing. Uh final questions for finance before we get on to paying some bills. Thank you very much. Okay, let's place the bill. Questions or concerns, there's some big numbers here and they're all from the usual suspects. Big vehicles, insurance. Emergency things. Any questions about the bills?
Who moves to pay the bills?
I'd free that to like start, just be more wrestling or somebody. Yes, they have already been paid. All in favor, pay the bills. Any opposed? Great. We are right on schedule, I was, and we have already, we've lost Paige, we've lost. Um let's take a little break before we get into the license. I said like. Okay, it is, thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
Uh, all right. Let's get back to business here, Mr. Jim, you've been so incredibly patient, um thank you. We are gonna now move on to, uh we're gonna change our hats a little bit and put on our liquor licensing authority hats. Um so we'll be considering the Leadville Grill and Cantina liquor license and so I would like to call the Leadville. Liquor Licensing Authority to order at um eight fifty-four.
Is it that that's with the two things in the.
Now you're on to something. Uh my name is Dana Green and I am the chairperson of the Leadville Liquor Licensing Authority. This is a public hearing before the licensing authority to consider a liquor license application by the Leadville Grill and Cantina. Requesting a um hotel and restaurant liquor, city liquor license and group thing for the property at seven fifteen Elm Street. hotel and restaurant liquor, city liquor license and group thing for the property at seven fifteen Elm Street, Leadville, Colorado, eight oh four six one. So after some housekeeping matters and in which we will enter the application and all supporting documents into the record. We, I I will ask the applicant to make a presentation. We will then take testimony for and against the application for people residing in the neighborhood and we will go over what the neighborhood means. Um, and then based on the testimony and evidence presented at the hearing, the licensing authority will determine whether to approve approve the conditions or deny the application. Um, any questions about tonight's procedures? It's been a while since we've done one of these. Okay, as this is a quasi judicial proceeding, any expertate communications between council members and the applicant need to be disclosed. So ask both in overview. None? Okay, thank you. Um. We need to uh review the list or have the list of documents submitted to the city as part of this application entered into the record. Normally, I would ask our deputy city clerk to go over what which of those wha- what makes up that list of records. Can you?
I can address that. So uh we, I took a look at the um package entries today. And uh I did uh did not see anything that was missing from the required documents. And these are state required documents, so essentially we adopt the space process and that. So it appeared to me that they had complied with all the requirements.
Okay. All right, all the appi- application and and um associated documents submitted to the deputy city clerk are hereby made part of the record. Liquor licensing has notice and posting requirements. Was the notice properly posted and published for this matter? Okay, thank you very much. Um, we also now must establish the boundaries of the neighborhood. So um some time ago, we, in twenty twenty-one, we passed a resolution that whereby for liquor licenses such as this, we would typically declare the neighborhood of surrounding this, the liquor license application location to be the entire city of Leadville. And so uh typically what we will do is is make a motion right now to define what the neighborhood means um in this setting. And I'm gonna give that to Mayor Prochem.
I move that the entire corporate limits of the city of Leadville be considered as the neighborhood for purposes of this liquor license application. In the public hearing pursuant to resolution number eighteen, series twenty twenty-one.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. So this concludes the housekeeping matters. I would like to invite the applicant to make a presentation to the authority concerning this requested liquor license application.
Well, I wasn't fully prepared. Hannah said that she would have everything ready and she was gonna move to approve, but um real simple. I'm just excited to come up here and be part of the town. When, when we, when I bought the restaurant, you know, we have a Mexican food restaurant. And I worked in the bar business for, I don't know, fourteen years and we got it. She was just gonna make another Mexican food restaurant like the one. When we realized the history of what the grill was and everything, I decided that I was gonna kind of take over there and I left my job and we've been refinishing everything and it's just really cool. And everything in Leadville, I'm just, again, I'm just excited. I'm nervous right now. Yeah, um, we want to bring a good, a good restaurant, a good bar grill to the town.
Are there any questions for us?
What was the specialty of the grill before? It was fried quesadilla or was?
No, the the it it was, it was kind of a chili chengue.
So my, my wife is from Mexico. I'm Texan. Um, and I actually, Mr. Martinez was there yesterday. And we, and and you know, that's more of a Mexican style thing, but we're, we're a mixture of everything. So I'm gonna, if I can make a good one. I'm trying to get him to to give me the recipe. Anyways, but we're gonna have to be nice to him.
Fantastic. Um. Okay, other questions for the applicant? Thank you. I would like to open the public input portion of the public hearing to hear from uh people from the neighborhood, i.e. the city of Leadville, uh to speak um to, for or against uh this application. Is there anyone in the, in city hall who would like to speak for or against this application? Is there anyone online who would like to speak for or against this application? And then I'm gonna, I'm saving it for you. Right? We don't do it very often. Um, and then I know that this tie has received a letter that will be read into the record at this time.
Uh, this one, again, Hannah printed this for us. I think it was received today at ten fifty-seven A M. I will keying as to this is from, and objection to licensing request. Cantina. Objection to the licensing, the Leadville Grill and Cantina. One, this business is located in very close proximity for many small homes and apartments with young children. These children are often playing in the street at the intersection of Elm and Lumen, riding bikes, planes, dog rivers, down in fun. Alcoholic sale of alcohol increases the risk of individuals driving in this area while on care. Two, in addition, alcohol sales in this, at this location will significantly increase the traffic on Elm Street. As a resident of one forty-five thousand since July two thousand seventeen, I've experienced the difference in traffic on Elm from when the grill was in business and not in business. Three, please consider the impact on the local residents with significant additional traffic and parking issues that this establishment will create. Thank you. I won a key.
Thank you. Any other letters that have been received in the meanwhile? Any second thoughts on public comment? And I would entertain a motion to close the public input portion of the public. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. At this point, we're in deliberation. And so some of the things, I'm just gonna go down this list of things to consider that may influence um the authorities uh decision. First is the reasonable requirements or the need of the city for this license and business. I would like to say, um, I know when we talked about it today, somebody did a little background and this particular location has had a restaurant style.
Nineteen thirty, I think it was thirty-four, was George Witz. And he opened the bar grill. I'm, I I've been actually studying it all. And 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 it's pretty cool. He, he was, I think, down here, the first African Americans in Leadville. And he had a lot of issues. So that's why it's down in residential. He moved down there. He did Cajun barbecue. Um, and then in the fifties, it was a, it was a Hispanic dance hall. And then the Martinez family got it, you know, in the, in the late sixties and they've been there since. I mean, a lot of history, the, the bar in there, it was commissioned, I think, by Anheuser-Busch in the eighteen eighties. They got it out of downtown, what's the whole, the sporting goods down here. And it's been in this restaurant for eighty something years. The, the restaurant's got a lot of history, I think, in the town. It's, I've actually, right now, I've got two guys in there and that's what we're doing right now. It's just restoring all the bar, all the old cherry wood. You know, we've, when we took, when we got it and I realized what it was to the town, I really put a lot of work into it. And you guys will see when, when it.
Um, then the next uh thing to consider is the desires of the adult inhabitants of the city concerning this license. Uh, we've had one letter in opposition. Um. Just gonna leave it there.
Can I speak here?
Would you? Yeah.
Yeah, there's people, I, I couldn't tell you how many people a day stopped. Working and came and everybody that's so, aren't so excited. They're like, we can't wait. It's good to have the thrill back. Um, I've talked to pretty much all the neighbors that are around there and I haven't had any, any adverse. But again.
It's a lot to ask them to come in at nine o'clock at night. The other, uh, another consideration is the number type and availability of liquor outlets, uh outlets located in or near the city. I mean, personally, even though this is a new liquor license, it was a previous for license. It doesn't, to me, seem like we're adding to the prior number significantly. Um, another thing to consider is demonstration of legal rights to possess the premises. So has the applicant provided to the city, to your knowledge? Design is in evidence of ownership or lease agreement? Zoning, this is a question that has come up. So I know our, our planner would like to look in because this was previously a restaurant, but then it was shut down for several years. There may be a need to proceed through some type of um some type of uh, I'm sorry, I'm looking for my notes on this, some type of zoning, uh uh required zoning approval to reopen this. This is sort of, can be something of a technicality. It may amount to nothing. It's just our planner don't have time to like delve into the, the details. Um, so just to, to put this in there, if we do end up passing this, it will need to be with the condition that the applicant um receives the requiring, required zoning approval for this endeavor.
Yeah, so we, we were to do a long amount of research today. If uh the uh previous uh restaurant had a conditional use permit. And so we needed to research whether or not the, this reopening, because it had been so long to see if it uses, needs a conditional use permit. So it, what doesn't hold up um tonight, you can approve the liquor license conditioned on whatever zoning approval is necessary. And we get a video to that.
Okay. The last two things for us to consider are a background investigation. Um, is the city find any reason why the applicant cannot hold a liquor license? Okay, and has a liquor license been denied for this same premises or in the surrounding five hundred feet in the last two years, which would support, say, for example, that this, this location does not need a new liquor business?
There have been no denials.
Okay, we have now walked through all of the relevant pertains to this consideration. Um, any further discussion, insights?
One, um, one point that was brought up in the intention letter mentioned parking, if I remember right, your location actually has substantial. Any idea how many off-street parking places you have? I mean, just from memory, you have more than twelve. Thank you.
Other discussion, questions for the applicant or clarification requests? Okay, the motion to approve this is a, is a little bit different from our usual motions. And so I am gonna make it because I have notes all over it, if that is okay. Um, so I move to conditionally approve the liquor license application for the Leadville Grill and Cant.
Actually, I can't remember. Did you close the public?
Uh, I closed the public in proportion of the public hearing. After our move, right? Yeah. Well, well, then we close the, are we deconvene? What's the appropriate? Closure of the authority. We adjourn. Thank you. Yeah, I like deconvene. Ms. Labun, do you have any? Do you have any guidance?
You're doing great. You're doing great.
Uh, I move to conditionally approve the liquor license application for the Leadville Grill in Cantina. I specifically find that the establishment meets the reasonable needs of the neighborhood and the desires of the adult residents of the neighborhood. That the premises are suitable based on a review of the plans submitted and the applicant is of good moral character. I, the the motion is conditioned on the applicant receiving the required zoning approval for this endeavor.
Luna, let's second.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Ed.
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Lay.
Uh, yeah.
Mayor Cruz, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mayor Green?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Tom?
Yes.
Thank you for saving a piece of Leadville history.
Yeah, I was scared. So personally excited about this.
I mean, you wouldn't, it is so awesome. Think like we're, we're digging in and I mean, it's, it's great.
It's gonna be beautiful.
Oh, yeah. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna try. Get everything going and I wanna get started and get, you know, we're got a decent. And then once I get it going, um, we'll open lunch and probably breakfast too.
I will ask that you reach out to uh Chape and LaChance, who was here earlier from our planning department. Just to in- inquire about the zoning.
Okay.
It will prob- it depends. He was, he was uncertain enough that he didn't want me to say like, yes, but he's, he's a very smart and thorough man and we don't want anything to.
Was it the gentleman back here?
Yeah, yeah. And so his office. Just reach out your hands and um he'll guide you through whatever process needs to be followed. Thank you very much. Thank you. Good night.
I'm surprised you didn't make the condition that no so.
I, I was so, I was so, I was so flummoxed by the good moral character.
What they're, what they were famous for, according to our agenda setting meeting earlier today, was the margaritas. The good moral character, you know, uh, I, I, I was assuming, only assuming that comes from Leadville's, you know, uh, past with, you know, our, our outlaws and whoever else might have.
You know, that's, it was a minority owned business from the nineteen thirties. That's pretty phenomenal.
It's amazing.
It's truly always been a minority owned business. That's amazing. And a very early black owned business, that's even more remarkable. That's a great.
Good moral character goes in and with good margaritas.
I, yeah, I was just sort of in the, in the agenda setting initiative. I was like, so what's the measure here? Like, do we have to? Like, is there a meter I can?
We were, we were a little nervous. But you know, like, you know, having to be the judge of good moral.
Okay, I.
You can tell them what we can. Well, we're, we're in a test.
Oh, it's the swiki test.
It was a swiki test.
All right, at this time, uh, uh, I important like to adjourn the Leadville license, liquor licensing authority. And we'll resume our regular city council meeting only to go into executive session. So um if someone would like to move to go into executive session, I have your text right here. It can be council member one there.
Councilmember Luna Lab moves uh all an executive session pursuant to C R S twenty-four dash six dash four two, parentheses four, parentheses Z. To determine um positions relevant to the negotiation of a potential intergovernmental agreement with Lake County for law enforcement services to develop a strategy for such negotiations and to instruct negotiate towards.
All in favor? Or I guess we, do we need to roll call? Or is all in favor of her?
Um, you can, we, we, we need a majority vote, so if we can get that back in.
Let's do.
Yeah.
Let's do a roll call then. Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Member Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Beth?
Yes.
Councilmember Edward?
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Lay?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes. Okay, we need to shut off our regular meeting recording and switch to a.
And I'll be, I guess, um.
Do I stop it? Hold your.
I think you stop. Wait. Thank you for the second. I know I have to agree with.
It's, it's where you're, where you're. You're good. Just, uh, open all rooms. You're up here. Then you can destroy.
You're late, Christian.
Obviously the snow phone gave up and went to bed. My goodness.
It's important.
Okay. It's okay.
Really engaged, you know, citizen that, that was the relative.
Totally a relative. Okay, the time is now nine thirty-three. The executive session has been concluded. If any person who participated in the executive session believes any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into the executive session occurred during the executive session or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, please state your concerns now for the record. Hearing none, I will resume our regular meeting. Oh, meri.
Being protective of all of us.
Okay, so I just really, I really, I know nobody's here from the sheriff's department. I really would like to thank them. I'd like to thank the city administrator for just there and, and attorneys on both sides for their dogged dedication to crafting what I think is a very workable idea to move forward with laws. I know it took longer than anybody wanted, but I think the ultimate product is, um, is, is really fine. I think it represents the best of what a negotiation can achieve. I think it represents the best of what a negotiation can achieve. Just thinking.
I, yeah, I know this has taken longer than we wanted to negotiate. I, but I do appreciate that the, you know, throughout, even though we we were coming from different perspectives, I think the sheriff's office and the city have come to a really good agreement. We all have the same purpose, which is to protect our community and cover for each other. And I think, you know, I do think we'll have to evaluate how this goes and see, you know, if the line we all came up with is workable or if things are confusing as we go forward. Uh, I I do think we did our best to define everything, but oftentimes we find out if you start implementing it and things come up. So I'm very excited to get this done and, uh, but but again, I I do think this isn't, you know, negotiating IGA's is is always going to be in the process. Yeah, I appreciate the good working relationship we have with the sheriff.
Yes, as do I. Um, so we all have the the IGA in front of us to review. Any other comments?
Yes. I like that the evidence technician and the shift coverage are differentiated as far as cost.
Go ahead.
Um, I had still some concerns about the price. Having not fully understood and not feeling like the initial uh, say was enough of a justification, I'm still a little bit concerned about that. But I would happily entertain anyone's comments.
Well, I I would like to say something because I know what I learned. Um, so if you recall, the sheriff sent out like a really long email and their redlined version of the IGA. And buried in all of that was also a letter that I personally missed because I I just feel like there was so much other information. And so when he asked me, well, did you read the letter? And I was like, did I get the look? I mean, and then when I looked at the letter, like, he actually does spell out why he feels that that price, that the hundred and fifty dollars uh, hourly made sense. And now having read that letter, and so that was sent to all of us. Um, that helped me further understand what that 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 price differential from the typical contract rate.
Do you hear me? I can go over a couple of them. Their coverage of us will include overtime pay. Uh, not always, but sometimes. And so this additional price or this higher price covers that additional overtime cost that they had. Also, if they get involved with an investigation or a case that goes long term, they are assuming the liability for that and will carry that through as the sheriff's office, not as the responsibility of the city. That's another part of the slightly higher hourly rate. There's several things, so that and that, uh, letter shared segment, and then we'll go into a couple of other points. It's actually a very reasoned, uh, hourly rate. Uh, it also lowers drastically the city's liability, that in and of itself, that's cost.
One, and one of the other things the sheriff did clarify for us is that a hundred and fifty dollars an hour does mean that we would get a dedicated, um, deputy for that. We have, we did have the question about whether or not it would be just the deputy that's already on duty, but this would actually be a deputy or a supplemental person who would be dedicated to the city. But the one thing is obviously, you know, if there's a call for service and there's additional, you know, staff needed to respond outside of the city, that 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 person would go, just as our own officer. Because we do that for each other and as part of our mutual aid agreement. So, but otherwise, the person would be dedicated to the city limits. So part of that being that justification for that.
Thank you. That helps make your call.
Can we request support for something less than a full ten-hour shift?
To our men.
To our men. And I'd also like to talk a little bit more about the fiscal impact, which I understand from what we have in front of us is eighty thousand dollars. I also understand that the sheriff's department has now asked for retroactive pay for services that they provided, which would be above and beyond the eighty thousand. So would that that be end of the terms of our existing MOU at the same rate that's envisioned under the IGA or are they?
Well, they they have considered bills already, the person with the coverage for this year, and they bill that except for the budget. I don't know. We haven't made a formal decision if that's going to start to count toward the eighty thousand dollar cap or not.
I thought we, at least in our discussion, that we clarified that it would not. I think that was one of their big concerns about having eighty thousand as a cap. Like, my God, if we're already almost halfway there, then what is the rest of the year hold? I I guess my, you know, my feeling is that is that that should be dealt with separately. Um, it's a mark of good faith to pay them for services throughout the first quarter of the year. I do think it's reasonable to square it with the hours that we requested because I know there was a little bit of sliding around. Um, you know, and 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 maybe that might shift that number somewhat. But I do think that it, I I think it's just a matter of good faith and being a good partner and having this the service provision to the candidate in mind to compensate them for that coverage. Um, and this to outline the coverage showing going forward because they were just, you know.
And it's a lot to be clear about that because we had budgeted for seven, I believe, officers by the end of this year, but they were
Yeah.
Correct. It was basically based in the, you know, the intention. So we'll have a look and see what the impact is to this and whether or not it's for budgets.
But it's possible to do this.
So when I looked at, when I looked at our budget so so far, um, it seemed to me that even if we did the hour that we squared the hours and we said, oh, are we, all right, yeah, we get the same number as you, that we could manage the that particular number, the thirty-two thousand, because the police has been under so much. This is my calculation from from the last, I didn't, I didn't include this packets financials. This is from the last, the end of the last financials, but I thought we could absorb it. I think the bigger question is like, where does the eighty come out of? And, you know, we may have to dip into reserve for that just because of this extraordinary circumstance.
Um, this, uh, originally, the sheriff's department was going to add additional staff to be able to cover this. Is that still, are they adding one additional officer in order to be able to provide this coverage to, you know?
Oh, you hired? Yes, I hope.
They had two people in the fight. And eighty thousand dollars at one point was was able to cover one person. So they are adding to their staff to be able to get into the IGA. They're not further stretching their existence.
Correct. Assuming that there are folks coming through the pipeline. And we forgot to ask the sheriff's department about that, but it was my understanding that they were having somebody come on in April.
Yeah, they have a new officer as I, um, not for great reasons to be quite honest, but, uh, they do have a new officer. Four officers, four sheriff's officers in the fight. Working for the rest of the year.
However, they, I do, I do not believe they have enough to like double staff every single shift. That's the goal, of course, right?
Yeah, everybody's still stretched, but we actually, we can actually count on that. So that's one.
Yeah, I think that was the thing we talked about from the beginning of this discussion is that truly to solve the problem isn't an IGA where whole department, that doesn't change the situation. Changing the situation is 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 sapping up to where we're budgeted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to say that anything with packages and our life package is competitive.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so. Encased in that, um, discussion, we have resolution number twenty-eight before us through the twenty twenty-four, which is a resolution appro- approving an intergovernmental, excuse me, agreement for law enforcement services. I'm not sure. Lori, if you want to go, I mean, we've kind of covered all this background information, the staff report. You want to add anything to that? That's, I know, we basically just did all of this.
Given the hour of the evening, I'm just happy to answer any questions.
No, you've been very candid. Thank you very much.
Okay.
What is the formal mechanism of triggering this request?
So the the IGA has in it that, I think, well, the practice has been happening. Sergeant Ortega and, uh, he does scheduling and inter- we meet. And we are, I think it shouldn't be too hard to create an online, uh, calendar of the schedules so that, you know, sheriff's department can even see further than whatever we agreed in advance that we would meet. But he can see potentially when the gaps are. But the Ortega and Sergeant Ortega and Sheriff's Department need to discuss the gaps. And that that would be the initial request to say that we need coverage. Can you conceive? We have somebody out of the military that we need to be covered these days. And it becomes an issue where the, you know, the meeting doesn't work. We can, you know, look to document it, but we don't, you know, I don't agree that we don't need it.
Will Sergeant Ortega or will somebody be maintaining records that we could then double check the sheriff's records against?
He is responsible inherently.
He is.
Uh, yeah, I think, and I I think we may need to, you know, that's a good point. I think we may need to make sure that we're documenting that and we just understanding the sheriff's department.
You can document that. Okay, here's our records.
Yeah, I noticed, acknowledge it. Thank you.
I I think that was a good procedural addition.
She asked really interesting.
Ms. Loubert, have we discussed this enough to to?
If if you feel you've you've substantially discussed and there's no more questions, I was.
This was a really substantial discussion, actually. Are there any further questions for staff? Okay, then I would entertain a motion.
Edwards moves to adopt a resolution of the twenty-eighth series of the twenty twenty-four for resolution proving an intergovernmental review for law enforcement services.
Thomas seconds.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Louie Noel.
Yes.
Mayor Procheyon, sir.
Yes.
Mayor Reed.
Yes.
Councilman O'Beatt.
Yes.
Councilman Bertram.
Yes.
Yes.
Hallelujah. All right. Kind of. Let's take public comments. Yes, sir, please.
Okay, so, um, let's see, it's on the, uh, page there. Um, well, the staff continues to, uh, Mr. Lapig, like a seal. Police department getting completed, but, um, I have comments on the zoning things here. Chapin's gray and green comparative diamond as well worth additional records. Two, developing incentive agreement provision advice from attorney rejected by P and Z members Barnes and and relative really lap it. Existence on by the other pending. I believe that these, uh, building height limitations should be incorporated expressly in the code so as to avoid the cost of challenging litigation in the future. Okay, we're almost out of minutes. Um, I agree with regard to density and ADUs. I think the best solution should allow for ADUs that be up to three dwelling units, one unit being either basement or halfway below the ground and two dwelling units above. Yet a parking consideration should allow for two parking spaces per unit. So a three unit ADU would need six parking spaces. Uh, repeatedly staffed as referenced in, uh, this, Lori and, um, uh, Chapin have referenced in the past and Chapin did today, that public inquiry on seeking, uh, information on what is allowed for building and use of developing properties is never bending burden of time that limits the effective tension available for the preparation of revising our code and addressing other developmental issues. So a simple solution to that would be to get, um, an A-one line that would absorb understanding that A ones are starting to gain a negative. But that's when they have unlimited access to information. If they were schooled on just the information regarding this, something stuff, then it could be interactive A-one, something like call up and get represented that all these questions and time that Chapin has to spend talking to people about what they can and cannot do with their property to be handled by an A-one. And I think that's, that would be progressive to do that. Um, and then there was something else. Let's see, two minutes. Or am I almost at three minutes? Okay, so, um, it's hard to get into the screw right now, I can't. Oh, um, with regard to the, uh, I've been lied to by three different individuals in that month. People that were installing light fixtures, I mean, the, uh, dealing with the, uh, camera issue at the side of the park, guys that were cutting trees down across the street from even children. So this thing about this honor system on allowing people to report their income is as far as rentals go, I think that's ludicrous. So, uh, I was thinking that maybe one way to do this, well, first of all, you need to have some clear sanctions legislated if they cheat. And then the other thing is to, um, maybe make it rich that they have to run whatever income they get through, be designated. If they did that, then it would be a little stricter. Thank you, Congress.
Thank you so much, Steve. Okay. Holy cow, my Irish report. Um, I, some of you know, but last week I I went to the Irish Network of Colorado's annual gala, which is a fundraiser for the Irish Miners Memorial. Um, there are, that was a very wild time. And super fun. But they're planning to add an additional statue to the memorial, which right now we have the miner, I think. I think his name is like Liam O'Neill or something. And then they're adding a mother and child who will be seated next to him on the memorial. Um, they're very excited about it. This whole gala was was sponsored by the Irish, uh, airline Aer Lingus. And those people told me they're really excited to come up here in September because everyone finds the practice St. Patty's Day parade very amusing. And so we can all look forward to that. They were lovely, lovely people. Yes, that's.
We will look for that in the November sales tax report.
I got a really nice Aer Lingus bag, you know, bag tag. That's what I brought. All right, any council reports?
Um, yes, the chief report, uh, um, uh, housing, um, I had a great meeting at our last, uh, regional housing authority meetings. Went pretty well. We were trained by, um, our ongoing consultants. Um, I believe Enterprise is their name. And they covered a lot of things that I feel like were very applicable, not just to the general authority, but to, uh, the city, which I hope to work, uh, with that and to get that in place or at least the conversation started for the future. Additionally, there's a new thing that I thought you guys would be interested in. Grayson has been kind and generous, I think actually contracted by the county. Uh, but still someone kind and generous enough to be able to create a new platform called Coda. Uh, or not create the platform, but use the, uh, platform Coda to be able to organize uh, housing projects around the county. So if you go to the website that I will send you in the future, um, you'll be able To the website that I will send you in the future, um, you'll be able to track uh, what projects are currently ongoing around Lake County. Not just by our government, but developed by whatever other organization. Um, so you know, that doesn't mean that we also have to put input some things. Uh, which I plan to meet with um, Jackie on to kind of give her the update for. Any projects that we currently have mainly. Uh, with shape housing trusts and um. Any uh, workshops that we've had with any individuals and their statuses. Um. But other than that, I just thought it'd be a great tool for y'all to really review and. Hopefully use over time. Um. Honestly, it looks like a great tool to use period for a lot of other things, potentially street paving and other future things that. Yeah, basically.
How how the status of things does it?
Yeah, is that the same set that the county uses that you can access that shows all of the building permits and current projects? I don't know. Uh, um, I think it's up. I at least for. The planning zone for the county. But, uh, yeah. Uh, it would be interesting to see how this could be implemented. Um, because I mean, by frankly, this is. Oh, it's a great, but it's great to see all the projects one page and really capture. I think it's a really easy tool to share to everyone. Um, so I thought.
Thank you.
There's a lot going on in the camp.
In Leadville, Lake County, you have a big cap. Uh, other council reports.
Um, tomorrow night is the county's feasibility study, the launch. Of a public meeting process. I plan to attend. I'm very um. Interested in staying tuned into that because I do think it interacts with our. Community center project of. Mining Events Center.
It was. On their recreation specifically, it was on the website as they stated.
Yeah. Um. Our other council members, do you intend to be there?
I'll be there. I'm gonna go. I'll be tuning in remotely for the first half before planning these events starts.
Get twenty four hour notice. Five thirty tomorrow.
Does it count if I'm remote? Like, is that?
Yes.
Okay, I don't have to. My schedule's really good, so.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I don't.
They can go there and talk to each other.
Well. Something that you may debate decide on later.
It is.
Uh, I was gonna ask our senior attorney Laboon if. I would say if there are people who are on the fence about going, it would be best. We didn't have a forum there. Because we didn't publicly notice it. So uh, I would, I can quickly look up. But you know, obviously, I know chance encounters and social events don't count. But this is. Uh, so this little bit, we have a question about that county is having a meeting tomorrow on our uh, on a feasibility study. And there are several council members who would like to go and if. We didn't notice that we would have multiple council members there, what is your advice?
And it's a publicly noticed county meeting.
Correct.
Um. You know, there's so there's already a public meeting that's been properly noticed, just not for the city. I'm just trying to think through it. Um. As I go, I mean, I. I don't see a major, I mean. Decisions for the city won't be made at that meeting.
Correct.
And it is a publicly noticed meeting, so I can't imagine. I'm thinking as I speak, I can't imagine there would be. A major issue with that. I mean, yes, it is not properly noticed by the city, but it is a. Public meeting anyway, and it is not a. City meeting, and it's already been noticed.
It is very likely to appear to forest though, because whatever they plan, it's likely going to be within city limits.
I mean, I guess uh, maybe we can figure out if truly do have an issue. So how many council members? Mayor saying she may not go.
And I'm happy to bow out because I can only go to half of it anyway, before planning.
So let's just go along with that. Let's see.
Is that, is that a few of the council members? Can we just send?
Yes.
Councilmember, Councilmember Thomas, that that alleviates the.
Yeah, and I think I think that's a good way to have representation without kind of bumping up against that.
Yeah. I really, still again, I really like the way that the county does it where they list all these different meetings and. The the commissioners may attend, you know, just to sort of cover our. But even though we, this is kind of unusual for more than two of us to show up at anything except this.
Maybe transition to our new website, which is a city plus platform. The genizing of means and everything else, I'm hoping will be easier and easier for us to.
To do that.
Look to a system where you might attend. You know, community college or something like that. But we're we're moving hopefully in a direction where it would be easier to do that.
Continue to level up.
Um, I do have an addition, so sorry. Um. We have two upcoming events, um, both for. Um, representatives, for Representative McCluskey, who's having a town hall at three on the thirtieth.
All right, can you look it up?
It's like twelve thirty to one thirty, I believe. Um, yeah, one thirty. Yeah, um, and that will be at three. Uh, that's a Thursday. And on the thirty first, um. Representative Pedersen will be having a. Um, another, um. Launch.
Campaign launch.
Yeah, campaign launch on the. Interested, please, R S V P, reach out to me.
I do have one, the um. Historic Preservation Commission has been working really hard on this May twenty eighth event. There is a flyer in front of each of you. If you would please take it with you and find some place in town to post it. It's gonna be a really good event with really good information that's very relevant to. To Leadville proper. So any any support to get the word out would be much appreciated by the H P C.
Um, I want to address something that was said earlier by um. Mister McMurtry, and I regret that I'm doing this while he's not here and it. I don't mean it as a criticism of the content of what he said, but it was an acknowledgement of. Um, the safety net. And I think there was a false binary implied that. Here nonprofits carry the safety net burden and not governments, and I think. There's a truth implied in what he said, that is that here we fall short. There are many, many municipalities in Colorado. That have local support for a social safety net, and in fact, those communities are more likely to get state and federal dollars. Um, if there's already an existing infrastructure for such thing present. Um. I think um. The idea that it says European versus U S thing is also a false binary that. You know, a a vigorous social safety net is one of the things that for a long, long time we did really, really well. And um, so I just want to want to. Put that out there that, you know, the the local government involvement in the social safety net for our most vulnerable citizens right now is lacking. And yes, it's true that. Um. That nonprofits are picking up that load, but it is not enough.
By council.
Change the tone. So much at the remote, make sure that.
I got it.
All right.
Well, I haven't tried that.
I'm sorry. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, very great. All right. I just get suspicious about that. Other comments before we get on to public meetings planner.
Yeah, just goes without.
Public meetings planner, any additions? Please remember the. June sixth, we don't have them very often, but there's a lot to do on this one. Um.
Can you remind us when the first uh. Strategy session is for the city planning?
So the. The the gentleman who will be doing the strategic plan will come up on the meeting of the eighteenth to introduce himself and just kind of briefly present his. His process. The survey for the first part of it is sitting on my desktop, ready to go. I made the email list today. And then I had to go to a meeting, so I'm gonna send that out. Um, and it'll be in social media and in the paper too. Um, so that that is, that's that. And then the actual first, like in-person everybody meeting, um, we're on August thirteenth. Break is open that day for an event, so I'm inclined to. Sign up for that, one of the many things. Um, yeah. Okay, thank you. All right, anything else? Oh, man, we're over. Just didn't stay on schedule. Ten oh six. Thank you so much.
Who guessed?
Oh, my gosh, I think.
Guess eleven fifteen.
You just ruled. This is where we know.